Six fifty-nine.
Kristen, did you just put her up here?
Now I got you.
You ready?
That's awesome.
Meeting called to order. Today is December 3rd. Town council meeting. The town council changes, eleven seventy Main Street, West Ward, Rhode Island. John, may I lead us in prayer?
Bow our heads, please. Father above, we pray for your divine presence this evening. Bless this body with your holy spirit. Remind this council to be mindful and thoughtful. Guide our discussions and our decisions as the choices we make have significant effect. And finally, dear Lord, we ask that you bless our great town and all of her many citizens. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Jay, was that part of the leaders?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Before we move on, I would just want to welcome back the town sergeant. Glad to see you here with us today.
Glad to be back, too.
Thank you.
Maybe Haves Abert doesn't have to extend himself tonight.
Alrighty.
Looking at you. Sorry.
Discussion, action, vote of town council. Any matter on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of topic discussion and action by the town council. With a vote on the record to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda item. One, street abandonment, portion of Giorgio Street in accordance with Rhode Island general law.
Moved resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion.
Come on up. Mr. Chairman, take a moment to put on my visual aid. Mr. Lachey, can you see that?
Ah, no.
Even if you aim it towards, we can't see it.
Good evening. Thomas Cronin for the applicant. So, we have three things on the agenda tonight, all of them to do with this one project. With the council's permission, I think it makes sense for me to give a general overview for all three items. I have two witnesses to present testimony. So, if you, if the council wishes to introduce the other two resolutions as well, most of the comments are across all three. The road abandonment, the change of ordinance, and the change of map. But I'll leave it to the council's discretion as to how you wish for me to proceed.
We'll let you discuss. Mr. Solicitor, is he able to discuss the three items all at once?
If there is a motion by this council to merge those or bundle them.
But one's an ordinance, so...
Right, which you want to, you want to separate that one out with the other two? If you want to bundle the two of them, allow them to be able to speak freely, or?
Actually, I would have a question as well. So, one's an ordinance and it's the first reading.
Right. The ordinance is going to be a statutory authority, so keep that separate from the other two.
However, then there's a resolution immediately following that acting upon the first reading of that ordinance. And that's unusual, I would think.
Again, the resolution issue is just the opinion of the council. So, again, the facts that he may provide or the facts that may be derived from testimony might have bearing on how the council is going to opine through its resolution. So, it's completely up to you guys. The only thing I would say on a condition is just take the ordinance matter out of it because that's going to be a separate vote.
So, one and three?
With a show of hands, who's here for this matter?
Why wouldn't this be a zoning?
It's already been a zoning.
So, it's...
Because of the street abandonment issue, only the council can, now might want to address this. The council has to address the issue of a speed, excuse me, a street abandonment.
It's been to planning.
Planning.
Went to planning. They presented this basic package to planning. Planning gave it conceptual approval and made a favorable recommendation to the council regarding the abandonment of the street. I've given the solicitor the opinion from the planning board stating that it was the planning board's opinion that the council should go along with the abandonment of the street. The process before the planning board is a three-step process. The first one, called master plan. And all the council does, all the planning board does on master plan is they look at the concept that is being presented. They don't take into consideration engineering, water runoff, drainage, none of those things. They just say, this person's coming before us and they want to put X number of condominium units on this piece of property. They want to abandon a street. They want to do this, they, we think that concept is a good concept for the town. Once they get that first step of mass, what's called master plan approval. In this particular case, there was the additional step of the change, the abandonment of the street that had to come to the council and the change of zone. For those issues, the planning board says, we're recommending to the council that you go ahead and grant those. Once all of that is done, then they go back to the planning board and they have to show the drainage, the engineering, all of the details for the very specific things. That is called preliminary approval. There may be a situation where a unit is too close to a boundary line, so they need what's called a dimensional variance, they're too close for the setback. In that instance, when they have gone to master plan before the council, the council, the planning board, the planning board will say to them, we won't hear you on preliminary until you go get the zoning board's approval for the dimensional variance. So, it's a very detailed process. Under normal circumstances, the council doesn't become involved in this. In this particular instance, because of a change of zone and because of a street abandonment, neither the planning board nor the zoning board have that authority. Only the council has that authority.
So, after tonight, this probably won't be back before us again?
No, once tonight is, if the council grants his relief tonight, it goes on to planning and if necessary, zoning. The planning at its first stage has recommended to the council that you approve what he is asking for tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's confusion, I'm happy to proceed with one item at a time.
Go one item at a time.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll be able to answer any questions throughout, and I'm sure they'll come up anyway.
Sure. Alright, so I'll begin with the street abandonment portion. And if you grant me one, just one moment.
Mr. Solicitor, can I offer some evidence?
Absolutely. Going to give it to the clerk first to have right to mark it. And then if you've got copies for everyone, they can mark accordingly. So, your first one's going to be petition as one?
Thank you. Thank you. Petition as one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, may I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll begin with a brief overview. This is the site of the former West Valley Inn, plat thirty-six, lots five, fifty-nine, and two-twenty. Our proposal is to remove the existing buildings and redevelop the site as multifamily condominiums with up to sixty-six condominiums and thirty-three buildings as been, has been presented to the planning board as Mr. DeFiori suggested. We do have master plan approval and recommendation to council from the West Ward Planning Board after a public hearing in June of twenty nineteen. We have, as part of this project, requested abandonment of a portion of Giorgio Street. This is within the town council's sole authority to grant, and that is the reason we are here before you tonight. The site itself is twelve point eight acres. It's off of Providence Street by way of Blossom Street. The suggested, proposed is a development is condominium, single-story duplex-style condominiums with garages. The, the project will have an interior roadway and setbacks and conformance with the zoning proportion. But dealing directly with the street abandonment, if, Mr. President, may I approach the drawing here?
So, I've presented to each of you a survey, a portion of, a close-up of the survey. This is the entire site. Providence Street runs here, Blossom Street here. This is the present West Valley Inn buildings here. And as part of that parking lot, there's an old documented paper street in the town of West Ward right here that is part of Giorgio Drive. So, Giorgio Drive in the real world goes up here and stops, the pavement stops here, and it continues into the West Valley Inn parking lot here. So, a condominium, that's, that's what's presented in, depicted in that exhibit. A condominium has private roads not to be built, maintained in any way by the town. And as part of this development, we're requesting that the town of West Ward abandon this six hundred feet by forty-foot wide paper street. It has never been used as a public street. It has been part of the West Valley Inn area. The applicant owner of the West Valley Inn area is owner of both sides of the property. There's no other business or residence that will be affected by the abandonment. And if I might approach one more time, I should say that the abandonment is of this portion only. So, it won't affect Petracca Street as a public street or the access of these folks who live here, and it won't affect this portion of Giorgio Drive, simply the portion that's part of the West Valley Inn part.
The, the dimension, we've presented a survey. This has been advertised in the Kent County Daily Times, and we have a legal description of that piece of property. The, the abandonment process is by statute. It calls for some, you know, at this point, some archaic posting by the Department of Public Works in town that this is no longer a public road by signage and things like that. But in general, the, this is the request. Now, there were, this is a vestige of a former subdivision, and the other paper streets in this twelve point eight-one acres have been previously abandoned by the town council in various, at various times. This is the last one in this area. And so, that's the, the basics on the request that the town abandon a portion of Giorgio Drive to the condominium project.
So, I have, and councilman, this is your ward, forgive me for my ignorance of where these streets. I know exactly where Blossom, Petracca, and Giorgio in the intersection go. But beyond that, where Blossom goes off to the right on this drawing, is there an exit there? Because has this gone before our public safety group, our fire chief, our police chief? Is there proper turnarounds for our fire department to get in and out of here if Giorgio Drive is abandoned? Because right now, I know if they go up to Petracca Street, there's a couple of multifamily dwellings on the right-hand side, duplexes and whatever else.
There are. This has been to technical review as part of the planning process. And their, so their comments consider the over...
The overlay of the planning, what it will look like when it's developed. So, if I turn back to the...
Will you say technical review by, by the traffic committee?
It's, it's by the public safety committee of the town. So, chief of police or his designate, fire chief or his designate, also water authority, sewer authority, the Department of Public Works. Most of the projects in town go through this technical review project. And usually, at that point, they make suggestions. For instance, like you're saying, we want to either turn around or, you know, some kind of jug handle for the fire trucks or trash trucks or anything like that. But Mr. DeFiori has a comment.
Procedurally, before it gets to the planning board, it goes to the technical review committee. The technical review committee, as Tom just said, is to different department heads. The planning board receives their reports. If, for example, the fire department says no to a cul-de-sac, it's no for the planning board. So, in order for the planning board to have come out with that favorable recommendation, the planning board has received the report from the technical review committee and any problems that various department heads, be it police, be it fire, they have made sure that those expert problems have been resolved.
So, is that a different committee than the traffic safety committee? Do you know how it is?
Yes, the traffic safety committee, which I was involved in creating. If you want a, what was happening before, councilwoman, is that before a councilperson would say, I want a stop sign, and would get one.
Right.
The procedure now is that if you want a stop sign, you contact the Major Oshinbo. It goes before the traffic committee. The traffic committee then does a study of that location, makes a determination, yes, there should be one, no, there shouldn't be one. It then comes to me, I prepare the ordinance, I bring it for you.
So, there was a, there is a formal technical committee that sits down and meets in a room and looked at this?
A technical review committee, off the top of my head, is the town planner, the fire chief, the police chief, the public works, sewer, wastewater, I guess. I don't know who else might be on it. But it's basically the department heads who have to be concerned about developments, you know.
So, that's a matter, of course, for any development that happens, not just when there's an abandonment question.
Oh, yeah, if, if you're coming in, you want to put a condominium project in anywhere, you want to put any, anything that's going to go, pretty much anything that's going to go to planning.
So, Al, one more question on this, and I don't want to get off topic, but, I mean, this is a huge project here. If they give their approval that fire's okay, police are okay, planning's okay, is that just yes, yes, yes? Or is this something in writing that says the technical review committee met?
Technical review committee makes a report to the planning board.
Okay.
So, I sit on the, just state your name for the show.
Chief Jeffrey Verone from the fire department. So, I sit on the technical review committee. And that's also a preliminary approval subject to later approvals, okay? So, that, that's, you know, so we did, we got a general concept of what they want to do. We're, we're in agreement, you know, for that to go forward. But that isn't the final sign-off. It's a preliminary approval.
So, you're going to meet, you're going to meet again?
Once they, not from the technical review, I believe that's, that's a zoning, right? That gets that, so it's...
I don't believe this has to go to zoning. I think this goes back to planning.
So, well...
Zoning has very detailed things.
Building.
Is it too close to the property line, whatever? I don't think there are any zoning requests here. I think this particular project goes directly, if they get your approval, goes directly back to planning. At planning, then, if the chief has a problem with a turnaround, the chief lets planning know. If Public Works has a problem with drainage, when they come back before planning, at that stage, it's called preliminary. But at that stage, when the Navy gets off and, gets up and says, hey, the water's running off onto my property, planning makes sure that the water doesn't run off, and they put all the stipulations in. So, it's, this is the step to go to, back, back to planning, and planning gives the final, yeah, you can go forward with it.
Right, and the fire department also has plan reviewers for that.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair. So, in answer to your direct question, Mr. President?
When, when this technical review committee included a fire and, please look at it, they considered this. So, when they, when they said, yes, there's enough room to turn around a fire truck, just by example, they weren't just looking at the street ending there. They were looking at access to the private roads here, and so that's how they evaluated it. Just so you understand where that comes from.
Well, one, one more small point, just for the council's knowledge, that when a street is abandoned, the road is divided in the middle, and the people on each side get that half. In this situation, it's the same person on both sides, so it just disappears.
Thank you, Al. So, what, just one last point on the abandonment. You'll see here that the, this is the portion that we're asking to be abandoned. You see it represented as a road, but it'll be a private road. So, that, that's just the last comment there.
And that portion of Giorgio Drive that is not being abandoned, that's going to change, is that correct? It's going to become one-way? Do I, did I remember hearing that?
You will, you will hear from the traffic engineer tonight.
Okay.
He recommends that this portion of Giorgio Drive become one-way.
Okay.
That's right, to restrict the traffic flow from the condominium.
So, Mr. President, I don't have any further information to provide with regard to the street abandonment. I can move on to the next topic.
Why, why we're on the street is because we'll have to take that vote. Any questions from the council?
No.
Any questions from the public or concerns? Come on up, just state your name and address for the record.
Regarding just the abandonment, correct?
Regarding just the abandonment of the road.
Oh, the council do have access.
Come on up.
Wesley Kootu, oops, Ten Burns Street. The only other access from the West Valley property is to come down Blossom and down Burns Street. Burns Street is like this big. You can't even park your, your car in front of your house. There were three houses on the street. What's going to happen to us?
Where is Burns on this map, just to the right, off Blossom?
It's off Blossom.
So, this is going to this side here?
This one right here.
Burns goes from Providence Street up to Blossom.
Comes around, State Street, all those things that are in there, comes around?
No, it doesn't come around, it just...
Oh, you go in Blossom, it comes around.
Oh, you can go that way, or you can come off Providence Street. Yeah, where the laundromat is.
Yes.
You know, the old...
The old Damasys pharmacy, yes, there you go.
Everybody's going into the old...
Yeah, you know what I mean.
The old Damasys.
Something like that. So, Burns Street comes off Providence Street at that laundromat, David. Yeah.
But on, on this map, it shows it has an entrance and an exit.
It doesn't. Well, it does.
It does, yes.
The exit is Blossom.
Onto Blossom.
Onto Blossom, and then turned by the West Valley Inn.
So, Burns is not a standard road?
No, it is.
Yeah, it's a standard road.
Burns is off Providence Street, so Burns...
Well, I'm looking at it.
Runs perpendicular with Blossom.
It looks the same as every other road as far as, are you saying there's a reason why it's not accessible, or?
Well, our, our fears are that if people are coming out of the condo complex and go down Blossom and onto Burns...
What's, what's Winter, Winter Street?
I don't think, I think, I think the exit of the condo association is going to be on Giorgio, one-way out to Providence Street.
Okay, then that answers, that answers a big question.
Well, that's, that's the way it was.
I don't believe that's one way.
Yeah.
Say it again?
The question is, will the residents of the condo complex be able to exit the condo complex on Blossom, or do they have to go Giorgio?
They're going to be able to exit on Blossom. They're going to enter only on Giorgio Drive. On that, you'll hear from the traffic engineer that intersection is too close to that line.
All right, so Giorgio's going to be one-way into the project, and the way out's going to be Blossom.
Blossom will be two-way.
Yeah, this is a problem.
Yeah, because you need two ways, because Petracca can't be, you can't turn this side one-way, you can only turn this side one-way.
So, will that put traffic onto Burns Street?
No, it shouldn't, I don't think.
No, because they're going to be able to go out, out of Blossom. I mean, I couldn't picture people going around the other way, too.
So, let me ask you a question. You live there. I, I've been to West Valley Inn, very big events. When they leave those events, how many people ended up onto Burns Street?
Oh, quite a few, but it wasn't a problem because that's not a twenty, it wasn't a twenty-four-seven situation. You know what I mean?
But, but, in that situation, there's a big event, you got like a thousand people, are you going to have a thousand people leaving their condos at once? I mean, it's...
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, because I know I always either left Blossom or Giorgio when I left West Valley Inn. I don't think I ever taken a left onto Burns.
Some people might try to turn down and take a right.
Try to beat traffic or something, but...
Take a right onto Burns to get out.
But that, again, you're not going to have two hundred people leaving a condo association at the same time. So, you're going to have one, two, your busy times are going to be probably seven to eight o'clock in the morning and five, six o'clock at night. You know, and that's, that's probably going to be your busiest times, and let's just try to...
Hope for the best?
I don't want to hope for the best. I want to be correct off the bat.
We want to make sure.
I don't want, I don't want to sit up here and make a decision and hope for the best. I'm just, I want to make the right decision that, because you have to live here, I mean...
And have for quite a while.
That's, that's, you know, I'm not going to say it's not in my backyard. I'm still concerned. I, I'll share my concerns here tonight, and I think that was one of my concerns was not having a turnaround where, but with the, with the access, the road is still going to be there. It's just not going to be Giorgio, it's going to be a condo road. So, I can, I can understand that portion of it.
If I may comment on that, I think the problem, and I'll call it a problem, that's being raised, doesn't involve Giorgio.
Right.
It's a matter that if she comes to planning, planning will, that's one of the types of things, the planning will want to address.
And I believe traffic studies have been done?
I'll be presenting one here tonight.
Okay.
How about, and this is just my thoughts, can Burns be turned into a one-way?
There's no, there's no other way.
I've just asked, I've just asked.
No. And I do agree that this really doesn't have anything to do with the abandonment of Giorgio. I don't have a problem with that. Because it's not, but I'm worried about Burns.
So, why do you think people would come down, go left out of there to come down Burns instead of just going down Blossom? I guess I'm missing that.
Well, some people think it's easier.
Really?
It is because of the hill. I think it's easier.
Just to be, you mean seeing it? Visually, I'm not sure. Why is it easier?
I just need you to, I just need you to go.
Because it's flatter. Okay, all right. Yeah, okay.
But this, that's not about the abandonment, correct?
No, no, it isn't.
And I agree that it is.
Yes, thank you very much.
The old Damasys.
All right, any other comment about the abandonment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote from the council. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance two thousand nineteen fifteen, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the code of ordinances of the town of West Ward.
Moved resolution.
Second.
Ordinance.
I second the ordinance.
Moving second.
Mr. President, Thomas Cronin, Nolan Bernero Cronin for our ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant. So, same project, same exact area. We're asking, proposing sixty-six condominiums in thirty-three buildings on twelve point eight-one acres. This portion of our presentation to the council deals directly with the fact that this is formerly the West Valley Inn. And at some point, the West Valley Inn area, this, these three properties have been zoned business. So, it's currently zoned business, and, and we are foreseeing using it as a residential property. So, we are asking, requesting a change to the zoning map and the zoning ordinance to reflect its use as a residential condominium community. We are requesting that the R point seven-five zone be applied. This design uses that zoning, which is typical for a condominium development in the town of West Wallack. The, if that, R seven-five... The, um, if that R.75 zoning is applied to the area in this project, as, uh, Mr. DiFiore, uh, intimated, no variances or waivers or other dimensional relief is required, uh, in other words, it fits. If you, you know, if you did the quick math, um, there's some reduction or increase in density, um, if you have multifamily housing, down to 5,000, uh, but that would re, that would result in about 72 condominiums, but it, you know, it doesn't work. So, 66 is what works. If I might approach, uh, the map and just walk you through the project so you have a, a better understanding, we just talked about the street. The, so the Petuxa River. It's called, it's called, I don't know, it says Navy Pond, it's the Petuxa River. So this is a, a wide, uh, area where no building is permitted. It's, it's a wetback, wetland setback area, it's 200 feet, comes along here. That's about 4.5 acres of this property, uh, is contained in that area. This is a steep slope, you see the density of the lines here. And when you, whenever you're reading a, a plan, you see those lines close together, you know, it's a steep hill. This is the Riverview, uh, condominium next door here, we have a neighborhood of single-family houses here. You know, along Providence Street, there's also a row of, uh, single-family houses. We're proposing to come in off Blossom Street to Petracca Street, have a private entrance here, have a private road circular in nature to improve the circulation there. And we're proposing that to have an entrance only of Giorgio Drive as the, uh, traffic light is, is pretty close right there. We don't want people coming out, coming out of there. So the, um, the idea is that we'll stay out of the wetland, we won't require any sideline relief here, we've kept the buildings far enough away from all these property lines, and the project fits, and, you know, it has a nice, the Petuxa River here is gonna add, uh, a nice complement to what we're proposing here, increase the value of, uh, what we're doing, you know, people, we think that people are going to, that's gonna add value, uh, to their experience. So there's three lots there now, they're all, uh, zoned business, and we'd like to, to change them to R.75. That's consistent with the, uh, Riverview condominium and, uh, the, the neighborhood, although some of those houses went up before zoning ordinances were adopted in the town of West Warwick, they don't all have the same, uh, zoning. But the, um, we, you're well aware that we went to planning, and that traffic was a concern of the citizens in the surrounding area at that time. We submitted a traffic, uh, expert at that time, I have him here tonight, uh, to provide you with a little information about, uh, how this'll impact the traffic in the area and the recommendations that he has, may I present him to the council?
Yes, please.
I, I have a question, though.
Go ahead, Jay.
With 66 units being put in from, from zero now, have, has anybody thought of the impact it's gonna have on our sewers? On the wastewater treatment plant, has a study been done with that?
The, uh, yeah, I don't think an actual study's been done, no, the-
Has our engineer been involved?
The, uh-
Jim Jermaine?
Well, I wouldn't say yet, right, because all, all of the engineering for these plans is done at what Mr. DiFiore has described to you, as the preliminary plan stage, um, so they review, they have reviewed the concept, um, and they are aware that there's 66 units requested, and, but, uh, as to the actual engineering of, say, what size pipes would be required.
Well, can we handle it, that's, that's the question.
I, I think what, what happens is when they finally go for their building permit, once they get approved, and they get far enough for the permit, they get a nice little piece of paper, Kent County Water has to sign off, West Warwick Sewer has to sign off, I, I even think National Grid, all them have to sign off to say they, they're able to do so.
They don't get that far. They don't get that far. If the engineers and wa- wastewater and Kent County Water have not given the okay.
Stops.
By the time they come to preliminary, they don't get any further preliminary approval out of planning.
So if there's a capacity-
If wastewater says, "We can't handle this," they don't get preliminary approval out of planning. All, when I, when I mentioned the conceptual and final, I talked about engineering, water runoff. That's part of what, they have to come before planning, and they have to satisfy planning that wastewater can handle it. And I'm sure, uh, former Colonel Villa will be there to make sure that, uh, the wastewater can handle it. And, you know, that Kent County Water, uh, they're not gonna approve something and then have Kent County Water say, "We don't have the water to give to you." So all of that comes before they go any further.
Okay.
For instance, we just had the, the condo development off North Pleasant, it's twice the size of that, and it's been approved, the sewer department can handle, Kent County Water, they had to put their water pumps in. The condo right on Wakefield Street, again, that goes before everybody. And again, I still think, even after they get approved, they still have to get another paper signed and approved, because-
By building.
Yeah, by building, because I, when, when they go for their permit, and I've, I've had a couple, one or two permits for building, and that's exactly what they do. And you have to get, for instance, I was told there was no water on my street, and so they said, "N A." But what was my next, my next plan to build was, "I'm going with a well." And I had to get the engineering for the well, or the documentation from the residents on, and give it to the building official's office.
And, and as far as the request for a change from, uh, B to a residence, uh, it's probably only a couple of us here to remember when Club 400 was in its heyday, and at that point in time in 64, when the zoning code was adopted, you know, there was, Club 400 was business, so that's, that's how it started, but, uh-
And, and does this make this specific to this project, or can that, if, when we change this?
You are changing by means and bounds.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. President, before we hear the traffic report, can I ask for something? So, I do have concerns, okay, and I just wanna go through some information that I jotted down for the council, just to be aware of. We have a lot of condominium developments right now, uh, and this is pretty much as of December last, of last year, but a lot of these are still in process, so we have 108 units on North Pleasant Street, 165 at the Lipit Mill, 119 at Matson Ridge, which is in my ward, and I gotta be honest, they're not selling. 22 on Wakefield, 50 units on Hilltop, 12 on Quaker Lane, which is 471 condo developments. I fought for over a year, they wanted to develop condos, um, in Coventry along Medieval Drive, and they wanted to put like 60 units, we got them to go to single-family, which would be 80 units. I have, uh, on crossbow, at least 22 more units being proposed, now we're getting a proposal for 66 more units. If the economy turns, we're gonna have a glut of condominiums, that's gonna be a problem, so I'm just putting that out there. You know, I think the planner's office should stop being aware of this, I think that, you know, we have issues with condominiums going into single-family, uh, areas, neighborhoods, um, which may not be good for the homeowners who surround it. So I just wanna put that out there and have you guys just consider that, think about that, because, again, you know, if we do end up with a glut of condominiums, they're all gonna turn into rentals. And so that's something to think about.
Thank you for saying that, yes.
Thank you. Just putting it out there.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, so, at this point, may I present the traffic engineer?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Paul Bannon, he's a traffic engineer, he's appeared before this council, uh, and the planning board, and zoning board of the town of West Warwick, I'd asked that he be recognized as a, an expert in the area of traffic engineering. He can fill you in further on his credentials if you would like to hear them.
You don't have to fill us in with the credentials, you can just tell us about the town.
May I, uh, present, uh, an exhibit, Mr. Solicitor? This is the, uh, report that he prepared and presented at planning, I just want you to have it, uh, for your reference.
Thank you. So this is gonna be petition as one for the ordinance 2019 official.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bannon, you, please state your name, address for the record, and then you may proceed.
For the record, my name is Paul Bannon, B A N N O N.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Because there's no C V or resume in front of the council, just briefly go over his credentials, just a couple of preliminary questions.
Um, I'm a, 1982 graduate of University of Rhode Island, uh, with a bachelor's of science in civil and environmental engineering. I've been, um, employed as a civil traffic engineer in the state of Rhode Island for the last, uh, 35 years, and, uh, working on, uh, Department of Transportation projects for the State Traffic Commission, doing traffic safety analysis and studies for, uh, the State Traffic Commission, designing roadway improvement projects for the Department of Transportation, uh, and doing private development projects such as this over the 35 years.
Thank you.
Uh, as part of our effort, uh, we conducted, uh, a review of the proposed development plan, to review points of access and egress and onsite circulation. We conducted numerous site visits of, uh, the area, uh, different times of the day, uh, days of the week, to observe traffic conditions. Uh, we, uh, reviewed the roadway geometry, horizontal, uh, geometry, vertical geometry, site distances at the major intersections. We, uh, conducted traffic counts at the main, uh, intersection of Blossom with Providence Street. We obtained accident information from the local, uh, West Warwick Police Department to determine if there are any safety issues in the project area. And then we, uh, estimated the existing conditions and operations, uh, and then estimated the future conditions based on the, the land use of the, the residential condominiums, and then we, uh, assessed the difference, uh, between existing versus proposed conditions. The, as you were aware, Providence Street is a major arterial through the community. It, uh, services, um, it's approximately 34 feet in width with 12-foot travel lanes, uh, and five-foot shoulders in this area. It's posted at, at 25 miles an hour, uh, 30 miles an hour. Blossom Street provides access from, uh, Providence Street into the property. That access into the property, uh, is wide open, uncontrolled, um, so people entered and exited, almost looks like a through street, of Blossom Street, and that's why, uh, Blossom Street, uh, approaching the property, a yield sign was put on Blossom Street, so people just, just didn't shoot into the property, uh, and had, they had to yield to, through traffic on Blossom. The, um, Giorgio Street, which presently services two homes, is a short dead-end street. We had concerns relative to egress from Gi- uh, Giorgio because of the horizontal curve on Providence Street, uh, to the north, where, uh, the sightline is restricted, uh, and felt that that condition, you know, based on existing, uh, short dead-end street, doesn't serve much volume on a daily basis, um, so there hasn't been issues there. But, uh, introducing the residential condominium project, we felt that that, um, could exasperate the issue, safety issue there, and had recommended that it become an entrance only into the property. Additionally, the, um, we did not find any, um, review of the accident information, did not find any issues relative to, to traffic, uh, safety issues. Blossom Street intersection provides adequate sight distance for safe and, uh, access and egress. The, this type of land use, residential condominiums, 66, would generate, uh, during, what we look at, uh, for traffic studies as a peak one-hour period, the, the morning or in the evening peak, uh, relative to residential uses. During that period, or periods, uh, we anticipate, uh, 31 total trips, uh, seven entering and 24 exiting, and during, uh, P M, 37 trips, which would be 23 entering and 14 exiting. The existing Blossom Street, uh, intersection with, uh, Providence Street services very low volumes, uh, during the three, the four to six period, um, I think it was 12 exiting and five exiting. So it's a very low-volume side street.
Bannon, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this, I might have missed, is this being proposed as a 55 and older? It is not, it's not, okay, so, thank you.
So, um, based on the existing proposed conditions, uh, the Blossom Street intersection would operate, uh, in a satisfactory manner with safe access and egress to the development. As I, we had indicated, we had made recommendations, uh, to, um, make Giorgio one-way, but also, uh, realign and control, um, the, um, main, uh, Petracca Street entrance, reconfigure that, so our, the development is teed up to Blossom, and Blossom becomes the through street, the yield sign is removed, and it's a stop-controlled on, uh, entering and, uh, exiting the, um, Petracca Street. So, it'll be a controlled situation, where you don't have 100 feet of, of open pavement, so it'll be a regular, uh, side street, standard side street with stop-control.
Any questions on?
I just wanna make a comment, I, I look at traffic a little bit differently, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not trying to say anything different, but I look at it as, you have a family, you know, in, in the real world, right? You live in a house, you have two adults, they each have a car, 66 units times two cars is 132 cars.
Mm-hmm.
Just say, everybody works, they go to work in the morning, that's 132 cars leaving onto Providence Street in the morning, and coming back home, maybe that peak time, four, five, six o'clock, Providence Street's gonna take a pounding, in and out, every day. So, it, that's, that's the reality of it. There's, there's gonna be 132 cars leaving every day, and 132 cars coming in. So when people say traffic's not impacted, I disagree.
The-
Because if you live there, and you know what you have now, you're adding 130, and I'm not saying I'm, I'm for or against the project, I'm saying that's the reality of it, and I understand the people in the audience as well, they know what they have right now. When the West, West Valley Inn was in, was in operation, there were events, wasn't every night, and there were a lot of cars coming and going, but this is gonna be every day.
And it's-
You know, so-
And I understand, and, yes-
It does make an impact on the community, so we can do all the studies we want, but when you live there, you know what you have, and you know what you're gonna get. And afterwards, all done, nobody's gonna do anything about it.
You know what you had, you don't know what-
You know what you have right now.
No, had.
No, have.
Had.
No, have, I know, right now, right now, I don't wanna get into arguing with you, but right now, I know if I'm, if I'm living there, again, I'm not for or against it, I'm, I'm still listening to everything, if I live in the area, I know what I have.
And the-
We have, we have vacant buildings, right? I get vacant buildings, I understand that.
That is own general business.
We have vacant buildings, we have quiet, if they have, I'm just thinking of living in the area, that's what it is. They have quiet, and they're gonna have all these cars coming in and out every day, that's what it is.
There-
And they have, and they'll have concerns, I don't even know the people in the audience, but if I was living there, these are the concerns I would have.
Yes, it's, and a residential use is a, a low-impact project for, from traffic standpoint. Yes, there will be 130-something cars, but when we look at a project and we look at its impact, we look at the worst-case hour condition. Those 138 whatever cars, someone could be leaving for Boston at 6:00 in the morning, or down to Westerly. So the, the, those cars leaving are distributed over an extended period, anywhere between 6:00 and 9:00 A M. Or someone works the late shift and they come home in the morning. So, these numbers that I propose, are the worst, are the highest volume in an hour from that land use. So that's what we look at, and I agree, yes, there is that amount of traffic, but it's distributed, and the worst-case condition would be those numbers. And the property is own general business. What can go in that property?
No, I, I, I understand, I do understand.
And for land use, a residential land use is a, a, a low generator relative to traffic, especially condominiums versus single-family homes.
Right now, they can put a grocery store in there if they want to.
All I'm saying is, this is what it's gonna mean.
No, I know.
It could be 132 cars, absolutely.
Can I ask a question of the solicitor, because of your experience with zoning? Uh, just refresh my memory, R.7.5, is that specifically condominiums as they require less square footage to build? Can you put a single-family in there, or you need R.10? You can do it on R.7.5?
If you, if you fit the, the dimensions.
Okay.
It's, it's a resi- it's a residential, the R.10 is residence 10,000- The R ten is residence ten thousand square feet, R seven-point-five is residence seventy-five-hundred square feet, and R six, I think, is residence six thousand...
As I say, you look at, you look at my neighborhood, my house is an R ten, my other house next door is an R eight, and then next neighborhood over is actually seven-five. So, within three roads, we have three different R ratings.
And you also have to realize that those dimensions are pretty old. I mean, I don't think, you know, today, where I grew up in Poughkeepsie Hills, I think a hundred by a hundred was a, a big lot back then.
Any other questions from the traffic study? Any public comment on the traffic study?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I ask you? And I agree, there is, there are a lot of condominium projects in, in the town. What are the use, I mean, so, then you have impact on schools, as, you, you could have impacts on schools either way, but I mean, those are all things.
You mind, because these are not fifty-five and older, so there's no difference, they'll have children, that's why I asked that question.
What, what demographics are, we're straying, yes.
Well, that's okay, Councilwoman Williamson, because I have one more witness to present, and it's a planning expert to discuss how this project will fit within the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance of this town, which is really the key question before the council tonight. That's the measure of whether the zone should be changed, whether it's compatible with the neighboring uses, whether it fits into the town's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. So, I don't know, if I should wait for Mr. Goslin to return, or if I should proceed with my witness?
I can.
We could certainly give him a...
Give us a few seconds and see where you...
With the R seven, it's restricted to residents. So you can't get, as President Goslin said, a grocery store going in there.
Right.
Mr. President, I, I had indicated to the board that I have an additional witness with regard to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance of the town of West Walk, and the fit of this project within neighboring community, and if, if it's acceptable to the council, I'd like to present Joseph Lombardo.
Lombardo.
Mr. Solicitor, I have an exhibit to pres...
It's going to be petitioners two.
I have, actually, two. Mr. Lombardo's CV.
It's going to be petitioners two.
And then a copy of his report.
Petitioners three.
I'll get you one. One short, I apologize.
If you can share, that's okay.
And then a copy of his report.
Petitioners two.
And again, Mr. Cronin, just go over quickly some of the highlights of his resume or CV, please.
Yes. So, Mr. Lombardo, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is Joseph Lombardo, I have a home office in Hope Valley, Rhode Island.
Okay, and would you briefly state your experience and education to the...
Sure. I have a Bachelor's degree in natural resources and a Master of Community Planning from the University of Rhode Island. I've, I've also been the town planner in Richmond, Hopkinton, Westerly, and two communities in Connecticut. I've served as a planning consultant to a number of communities, I actually did a project here in West Warwick a long time ago. And for the past twenty, twenty-five years, I've been a land use planning consultant, I do have my certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I've been before this town council, your zoning board, your planning board, on numerous occasions.
Mr. Solicitor, I, I'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in planning.
I have no objection to what your request is, and I don't know if the council has any questions on Mr. Lombardo?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Again, good evening, members of the council. I, I know we presented this report about a month ago, so I'm not sure if you've all read it in, in the interim period, so I'm going to just give you a summary of it. And as, as Tom has pointed out, you know, you're, you're basically sitting here tonight as the, the council making a land use decision, because they're requesting this change on this property. So, I looked at, at the beginning, I talked about the suitability of the site, and when you look at that aerial photograph, and I use aerial photographs in addition to driving, you know, an area, but the aerial gives you a much, much better feel for what's in the vicinity, and you can tell, just by looking at that, there's a, a significant mixture of different kinds of high-density residential uses, as has been pointed out, there's commercial and retail, retail businesses on New London Avenue and Tollgate Road, and ultimately, as I look at that land use pattern, I see that this property being changed to a multifamily residential is really an extension of the existing pattern that you see there. So even right around the property, there's multifamily and single families mixed in and businesses. And as we all know, this was a, a business site, probably everyone in the room here has been there for a function somewhere along the line, so we're, we're familiar with, with that aspect of it as well. In looking at, first of all, I, I wanted to talk a bit about, you know, your, your planning process, and I know the solicitor for the planning board has, has given you a great overview of that process, but if you read the, the decision letter that the planning board sent you, it's, it's very helpful, because it gives you a good description of the project, it's talking about its, why it made its recommendations to you as the council on these matters, and you can see that from, there's a very great deal amount of detail to follow when they get to preliminary stage, but they do look at these various topical areas when they're looking at a master plan, it is conceptual, and they don't have detailed information, but they are evaluating those things, particularly, you know, the road network, and they're looking at utilities and those types of things, just to make sure that, that things will fit in on this site. So from that perspective, I read that report, and I, from the planning board, and I concurred with their findings. So you're really looking at a zone change here, particularly from that business zone to that R seven-point-five, which is a, kind of a higher-density residential zone, not just in, in West Warwick, but in, in most communities, that would be considered a high-density residential zone. I did look at your comprehensive plan that's, that's online, to, to see how that, that meshes with the major land development project, which is a, the land development regulations for your town. So those have specific requirements for, in order for them to, to approve a project, I'm talking about the planning board. But when we look at some of the goals for your town, it talks about new construction and renovations to promote housing stock that's safe, sanitary, well-constructed, well, these will all be brand-new. Talks about new housing that's compatible with existing and surrounding land uses. Again, we, we point that out, we look at that land use map, the aerial, we drive the aerial, we feel it meets that. Quality, accessibility, and the variety of the structures to be maximized. So you had your fire chief up here, you know that from the process through the technical review committee, all your department heads have already looked at this once, and they'll be looking at it again when the detail comes in at preliminary. When, I know Tom mentioned this, I'll just reiterate it, the future land use map of the town talks about this as a, as a mixed-use area, multifamily residential slash commercial. So, just looking at your future land use map, this zone change will be in compliance with that, and that's important, that means you could go either way with this site, it's already a business zone, but it could also be a multifamily residential zone. So when you look at that, that, that's why the planning board could make that recommendation to, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it looked, they look at that future land use map and see that designation. If it said open space recreation, well, then it's not in compliance with that. So that's, that, that, on page five, is, is a very important part, I believe, that you should, when you're deliberating on this this evening. I just highlight for you purposes of zoning. You know, all zoning ordinances in Rhode Island have these general purposes written into them, and for a reason the State Enabling Act has them, and if you look at those on page six, you'll see that these are the things that the planning board looks at, the zoning board looks at, and the town council looks at when they're making any type of a land use decision. And I highlighted the ones that I feel are important, and if you look at those, you'll see goals and patterns of the land use plan and the comprehensive plan. The characteristics of this particular site, is it suitable for this project? Availability of utilities, yes, that was a good question the counselor asked, that has to be answered, because without those two, those utilities hooking up, they have no project. So they know that, and all, all development has that same requirement. So when you look at those, those purposes of, of zoning, I think that will also help you this evening. And that actually goes right on to page seven, and it talks about having a balance of housing choices, and I know that came up, council talked about that. It is, it is good to have a balance of housing choices in your community. From my experience, it's, it's really market-driven. I do have, I do have my license for real estate in Rhode Island, Connecticut, and I have sold a lot of condominiums, I've sold single-family homes. It's really market-driven, it's whatever the market is, is looking for, that's what, that's what will get built, that's what will get sold. I also think that, whereas maybe twenty, thirty years ago, developments that had multifamily built them and then tried to sell them, in today's market, it's pretty much, they don't go very far ahead of sales. Sales drives the development. So as they slow down, they may not pull any permits for, for units until they've got a pre-sale, and then they'll build them. So I think there's a, there's a balance there, I understand your concern, it's like when you see a CVS come in next to a Rite Aid, next to a Walgreens, and you, and you look at that and you go, how can they all survive? They, they know they're competing with each other, it's a business decision, and ultimately the market decides that, at least from my perspective. So, last note on this is that, when you look at the master plan, if you had an opportunity to look at it, I found that it met all of those design requirements for a master plan. In order for them to vote and send it to you, it has to meet a whole checklist of items, and they've done that. So with a summary and a conclusion on page eight, you know, I looked at the zoning classifications as they are, and as they're proposed, I've looked at your comprehensive plan, I've looked at your zoning ordinance, and I've looked at the land development regulations that allow the planning board to make its findings and send them to you. And as I said, I concur with their findings, I concur that it's in compliance with your comprehensive plan, and as a land use body, as you're sitting here this evening making a legislative decision, that's a very important determination to make. Happy to answer questions, or we'll be here, we'll answer them as they come up.
Mr. President, may I ask one question of the witness?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardo, based on your experience, I would wonder if you would express to your board, the board as it sits, the benefits of condominium projects in, in a city of T...
And I assume by benefits, you're talking about the financial benefits?
Yes, I...
The council may not have seen, I do sometimes prepare financial, not financial, but more projections on population, school-aged children, and finances to the community, what you're taking in for taxes and what you're expending. In most, all the cases that I've prepared, these two-bedroom condominiums typically are a revenue generator to the community, a net revenue generator. And a lot of studies from a, a, a use category, single-family homes tend to be more expensive than they collect in taxes, and a lot of that has to do, obviously, with school-aged children, although I'm sure your community has faced, you know, enrollment declines, as most communities have in Rhode Island, that's, that's a...
No, actually, just the opposite.
Well, that's, that's, sometimes that's a good thing for you, that means you have a good school department typically. But in most cases, when you look at them from ten years ago to where they are today, there's a big difference. But my point is, typically, that's why single-family homes are, are, are net, not necessarily net positive to the community, doesn't mean you don't want them, it just means...
So there won't be any children in this development?
Typically, I can tell you that two-bedroom condominiums typically generate about five school-aged children per hundred units, so two or three.
One, one thing I, I want to point out is, this is one of the first developments that's come before the council recently, but if you've been paying attention to planning and zoning and whatever else, we have different types of developers coming in. This is obviously a condo development, but we also have a, a major developer who's coming through this town right now, trying to pick up all the properties to make affordable living. And I can tell you, they make the places look great, but you don't know what clientele's coming in, especially under affordable living. That could be done with this property, if he decides to sell it. Also, you know, like I said, Dave's Market wants to go in there, he's got enough land to put a Dave's Market in there under the commercial process, you know, be careful what you wish for, and I'm, I'm saying this for the residents too, because you're living there, and, you know, I want what's best for the town, I want what's best for the people who live there, but be careful what you wish for, because you, you may see this development, which is, and I agree, we have a lot of condo developments going on, but a condo development, and the condo developments that have been around for years, specifically in Ward One, they went from anywhere between two-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars, and they've seen their market go down to two-hundred, but now they see their market going back up to four-hundred. So, you know, you've got to look at the, the, the people that are living there, the, the type of neighborhood you're going to have, and I, I, I have been bombarded in my area because I have two affordable living homes that just came in, and none of the businesses and none of the people who live in the area are very happy right now, you know, and didn't have to come before zoning, didn't have to come before planning, and all they're saying is, what's going on? You know, so, you know, this is, this is a major decision for the town, is, is what you want to go there also.
If I, if I could just add a little bit on top of that, if you could, the two major groups that are going to be purchasers, so to speak, or buyers, millennials who typically won't have any school-aged children, because these don't have the features and the amenities that a family would normally look for, and baby boomers, folks my age and older, who are looking for downsizing and moving out of their home. So what happens with that process? If I sold my single-family home in West Warwick, but wanted to stay in West Warwick because my children and grandchildren here, I'd be looking for a condominium, but that creates a single-family home now, an existing one, that becomes available. So when you look at a building permit data around the state, you see that there hasn't been a lot of single-family homes being built because of the condominiums, and it's, it's the demographics of the people. When you look at ages of people and the buyers that they are, you know, and I've seen it personally in my own sales in my real estate business, where I've seen those folks coming forward and looking for this type of, of, of a particular housing type.
One of the biggest studies that just came out was about this latest generation between eighteen and thirty, that said they'll never own a home, they're going to rent for the rest of their lives, and, you know, so that, that's going to be a change, because, let's face it, they, rentals are going up, and they continue to go up, and, but people don't want to maintain properties, so condos is one of the reasons why. They don't want to cut grass, they don't want, and, and on the, on the town side, we're not picking up trash for those sixty-six units, we're not plowing those sixty-six units, we may be supplying some school education, and, you know, again, every, every development I hear come into town, and I know we're in some certain grade levels, we are busting at the seams of education, but everybody always says, oh, it's going to bring kids to our school, it's going to bring, don't we want kids to our school? I mean, I, I'm just, you know, yes, it's, it's a tax burden, people say, I don't consider it a tax burden, I think our teachers are teaching, and people want to come to West Warwick for our education, that speaks volumes.
Oh, I, but I'm, I'm thinking like, for example, Green Bush Elementary School, they're bursting at the seams, they cannot fit any more kids in there.
Right.
So, you know, we have fifty-five and older going in, in the area.
Either Wakefield Hills or Horford.
They don't seem to be selling.
If I might expand...
It's a four-phase project, they've taken out a lot of trees, and they've only, nothing's moving, I don't know.
It's a risk on the...
It is a risk.
Something else, President, said, about what can go in there. As I responded to you, Councilman, R seven is residence.
Yes.
I don't have my zoning code written, but I can add you, in A B, the list of what can go in there is like this, from the market to, you know, a whole...
Golden Corral.
A whole list of...
Well, again, if, if, if he decides that, you know, he wants to put a, a Golden Corral or a Dave's Market in there, you know, that, does that have to come before anybody's...
If permitted uses.
No.
If it's...
No, because right now, it's still commer, right now, it's commercial. So right now, this individual can go to Dave's Market and say, hey, we've got a beautiful spot in West Warwick, Dave's can probably purchase a few houses in that are in front, and make that a Dave's Market.
In, in a B-zone, there's a whole list in the zoning code, you look at it, you go down the list, this is permitted, this is permitted, and they don't have to go to planning, they don't have to go to zoning, as long as they meet setbacks and anything else, but there's a lot more things that could go in a B-zone than you go in a R-zone.
And the, the reality is that, that...
And the, the reality is that, that Mr. LaCroy and his family have ties to this community and, and have for a long time, quite honestly. And they are business people and they're making that decision. And I guess I would wanna touch a little more on in phases, tell me what that means. I mean, you're not gonna put up sixty-six units all at once.
So, Mr. LaCroy, would you like to testify or? Here, Mr. LaCroy asked me to bring up two points to the council, and Councilman Williamson has brought up the first one. And that is that this is a, a market researched, market-driven project. We're not, we're not asking to phase it so much, it's not that large a project that it could be phased. But the plan would be to build some infrastructure, build, build a model condominium, build and sell the first few condominiums. Because as with any condominium project, that's the hurdle, right, getting populated, right? And then it would be build and sell operation was one of the things that he just told me. And, and the second point that he wanted to bring up, and I, and I think it's a good one, is that this is a, a reclamation of this land. Currently vacant, you know, asphalt parking lot. And he's gonna turn it into something that's very nice, you know. In addition to the community, that's gonna add value, not only to this site but to the surrounding area. They're gonna be, you know, high-end condominiums that are in market demand, and that's gonna be a plus for the town. As opposed to, and you, and you councilmen are all well aware that Mr. LaCroy has tried a couple of things here and, and hasn't, you know, hasn't really found success or a good match. And this is a good match and it's gonna bring a positive to this area. As opposed to what's there now, and if he had to continue to attempt to market this piece of property as it exists.
Can, can I ask you, Mr. LaCroy, does it give you pause the fact that, I mean, John gave a whole bunch of numbers of, of projects that are ongoing now?
Before you answer, state your name and your address, and then you can answer.
Roy LaCroy Jr., 211 Manola Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island. Yeah, obviously those numbers give us a little bit of concern. But the idea is that we're attempting to partner up with a builder that builds very desirable homes and condos rather. And we've done some research, we've met with a few different ones. We believe that once we find the right partner, that the units will fill themselves. We're not gonna go and just build everything on spec, it doesn't make sense to do that, it's very expensive to do so. We're gonna work on, as Mr. Cronin said, building a model, and then from there, start building as they sell. So, we're not gonna have a whole, Mr. D'Amico's concern was that we'd have a whole bunch of rentals. They're not gonna even be built unless they're sold. So, that's not going to be the case in that situation.
What do you think the timeframe is between, before the whole project, a year, two years?
Well, it's been six months to get to this point from the planning board.
So, in five years.
Yeah, so, no, we're, we're working as quickly as possible.
Are you doing like so many condos at a time, like you're doing like three phases of twenty, or what is, what is your plan?
Our, our intention is to build as they sell. So, it's not that we're gonna designate.
You'll have a model and then it's one, one, one at a time?
Essentially, I mean, that's the idea behind it. But I mean, we were hoping to have a few of them sold, you know, at, at a time and then build from there.
So, the question I have in light of what Councilman D'Amico said, are you going to ensure and guarantee that your property will remain condominiums? Or in likelihood they don't sell, you're gonna come back to the town and ask them to convert them to apartments?
Well, we can't make any guarantees, and I wouldn't say that.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is because what happened down at Royal Mills. All right, Royal Mills was all condos, and then when they couldn't sell them, they came back in and wanted to go to apartments, which they were able to do. So, that's gonna be, I mean, Councilman Goslin was here for that, so the other councilmen weren't. So, that caused a lot of bad faith and bad feelings between the developer and the town. So, that's something that you might wanna think about.
There's a difference between Royal Mills and an individual. There is, he puts it up, there is legally no distinction between a condominium and an apartment. He, it's ownership. And Royal Mills had some town involvement in it, and that's why they had to come back.
But if, as, if a developer guarantees and ensures to the council that they're not gonna be converted into, whether there's any distinction between apartments and condominiums, I think that goes a long way sometimes to.
Publicly.
Well, these people are, they're loaded in by the public.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't think, from my perspective with planning and zoning, that we could raise any issues about whether it's a condominium, private ownership, or it's a building that is. I could buy it and lease it. And there's, you know, from, from my aspect of it, there's really nothing that.
He could, he could build sixty.
Oh, no, I'm not disagreeing with you. But he could, he could build sixty-six single-family homes and rent out every single one as single-family homes.
Or I could buy one and rent it.
Correct.
If I may ask, what is the, I know the big concern is with renters, is that they're low income. They're, they're typically, what we've seen, what Mr. Goslin has spoken about, that the clientele, you're not, this is not going to be a low-income affordable housing, even if it were to be rented, if, if somebody were to purchase and wanna rent it out, they're not going to qualify for Section Eight housing. They're gonna have to get people that have good jobs, wanna come into a community. So, I, I, you know, to say that somebody, a renter is a, not a good person to have in your town is kind of a. You know, I, I rented for a while myself, you know, I took care of the house I rented. I think most people are like that. I think the big concern is, will you have affordable housing in something like this? And I could say that, that would not happen because it would be a fall.
And Royal Mills, I mean, I mean, they're, I think they're full now, right? I mean.
They're always at capacity. I mean, it's not like it's been a.
So, it's not like it's tough to fill, it's not tough to fill the area, I mean, and, and that, right now, I mean, yeah, you can't predict.
Again, you can't predict a hundred years from now.
You can't predict houses in ten years either.
I can guarantee half of us won't be here in a hundred, actually all of us will not be here in a hundred.
Yeah, Bert's still gonna be here.
Bert, Bert might, you know, he's still, he's still. But again, if you look at this town a hundred years ago to where it is today, I'm sure a hundred years ago, they, they couldn't predict Royal Mills being Royal Mills. You know, they thought it was a manufacturing company, you know. Things, things have changed and unfortunately, you're not getting mills into a mill town anymore. You're not getting major retailers. The major retailers are closing all over this country because of your internet sales, your Amazon. So, you're not getting that coming back here into this community. So, you gotta figure out what's good for the community.
And not for nothing, how long was it up for sale?
We, we've now had it for.
No, before you bought it, in between when?
I, I actually don't know the timeframe.
About a year and a half at least. So, anybody could have bought it and put, I mean, that's my, anybody could have bought it and put anything they wanted there. You purchased it, I mean, I know that you have to meet, meet certain requirements, but I mean.
I, I could tell you personally, I know the previous owner, I've had conversations prior to Mr. LaCroy and his family purchasing the property. And people approached him left and right to put condos, apartments, and, and he did not. He, he wanted it to stay West Valley Inn, and that was their number one intention when they got it. But obviously, they brought, and I know personally people that have gone down there, talked about opening up restaurants or whatever. It doesn't fit today's model. And, and you look at that style, and, and the previous owner will tell you, he thought through different marriages and different relationships that there was gonna increase business down there, new laws, everything. It did not happen. People, Evelyn's Villa, it's, it, that was a half the size of that, and it couldn't function doing the big functions because those style banquets and all that are done. They don't do them anymore, those types of weddings, catering, people do catering at weddings, you know. We have our own Malanzis right here in West Warwick. He says, I don't do well in my restaurant, I do better when I cater a wedding down in Newport. That's where they're going, they're not, they're not coming to West Valley Inn anymore like they used to. I got married there, I got married in the backyard of West Valley Inn. You know, it broke my heart to see it go, you know, but it is, it is what it is. And unfortunately, like I said earlier, we, the town, need to decide what's gonna go in there and what's good for the community. Because I could tell you now, if, if Mr. LaCroy says, oh, Dave's Market approached me. Well, Dave's Market, we all know, on a Friday, Saturday and Sunday, have thousands of people walking in and out of there. And that could be coming through your neighborhood. And I.
You also can't have it both ways because people want, they want money to come into the community, but they also want it to be quiet. It doesn't work both ways. I know you gotta find a balance, but you can't have it both ways. It can't just be desolate land everywhere. Not that there is any in West Warwick anyway, but I'm just saying.
This is probably the largest parcel left, to be honest with you, one of the largest parcels left besides up in Ward Five area on Murphy Highway or whatever it may be.
Yeah, it's not much left there either.
But, you know, that's, that's a decision. I mean, Councilman, this is your board, you know, it's definitely.
And I've actually, I've had conversations with the LaCroy's, I've actually, they gave me some projects, different developers, and I know that they haven't actually decided on one yet, but they gave me some projects to go and look at that, with potential partners that they were looking at, and they were all very nice quality homes. I, I will say that, the developments were, were top-notch. What, what's the price point not holding you to it that you're thinking about?
Because this is all conceptual.
Yep.
Yeah.
Our immediate, when we were working on our pro forma, we were figuring it to be about three-hundred thousand to three-hundred and thirty thousand for a condo.
Which is a lot like, a lot of what you talked about.
What we're looking at.
Yeah.
Um, let me ask you, one of the key points I, I think you said was gonna be a selling point, was the Patuxet River. What, what is gonna be going on with that open and vacant land on the Patuxet? I know you can't touch some of it because DEM and. That's the correct answer, Mr. President, we'll be doing nothing because that is what is allowed. So, it'll be cleaned, it's a little, it's a little bit of a mess, you know, it'll be, it'll be cleaned in order to be appropriate for the community. But there'll be no additional landscaping or clearing inside of that perimeter wetland.
Is there an access point?
I was gonna say, is there gonna be access to the water or anything?
From the residents?
Well, if there's one there now, it can be maintained and improved. We would have to locate it and clear with the DEM as well. But generally, if there is one, they will allow you to, to make it nicer. You know, they, they don't wanna restrict things, they just don't want new access. And I'll be honest, since it's been vacant, we have gotten complaints from residents who live in that neighborhood. Even, I'm not the councilman in that ward, I would get phone calls about shenanigans, late night parking, cars parked on the property, doing whatever, beer bottles, a resident who lives off the side, to the other side of Georgia, where you wanna talk about the one-way, her husband's over there cleaning up bottles and stuff like that, that nobody in that neighborhood put there. It's people who are coming there and hiding and visiting and, because it's a dark area. So, it's also, that will go away if something's developed there also.
They talk about the gazebo, they're not going to statues.
Yes, yeah, right.
Well, I think the worst, one of the worst things to have in any town is vacant land, vacant space. I am concerned with the number of condos that are going up in town. And really what happens, like Councilman D'Amico said, what happens if they don't sell? You know, I think that's, but you can't predict that. I did see the new purchase that the LaCroy family has made, I toured the building on Pulaski Street, that's in my ward, and the storage unit's going up there. And I'm not questioning the work, you know, the value of the work, I think it's gonna be top-notch, you know. But, um, I, I, the traffic on Providence Street, I think, when all is said and done, I think it's, it's a strong possibility that's going to become an issue. As I travel Providence Street every day and it's, and during that time period. And it's just something to think about, doesn't affect us, but it's something to think about. The school buses that stop every fifteen feet. Providence Street from, all the way from that Tollgate Road split, all the way down towards the mall, it gets backed up and it's every morning. And you take all the cars coming out, most likely, they're going to be going left towards the mall. So, you know, I think the council, you know, and this is gonna be down the road, I may not be even beyond the council at that time, but I think it's something that the council's gonna have to think about. It's gonna be coming.
For the council's knowledge, that issue was a major issue before the planning board. So, the planning, we had a lot of residents coming in, talking about the backup on Providence Street.
It happens.
And it was quite a bit of, I'd say, testimony before the planning. So, if there is an issue, and I can tell you the planning board chairman in particular is very, very sensitive to that issue. So, I, I wanna assure the council from my position at the planning board, that the planning board is very, very, very sensitive to that traffic issue on the Providence Street, Boston Street.
It absolutely does get backed up, there's no doubt about it. The chairman of the planning board actually is also a resident of Ward One, so he is well aware of, of that situation. I'm not sure how you, I'm not sure how you correct that, to be honest with you. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
South, South Secosia, tax assessor for the town. Jason, out of all those units that you were talking about that have been okayed, I don't think there's fifty that are actually up yet. So, but they may, they may have been okayed, but they're not being built until they're ready to build.
I, I could tell you, the North Pleasant Street was approved in 'oh six. And here it is, two thousand and nineteen, and they got ten units in, that's a hundred and twenty-two units.
They, he sold eight, he's putting another building up.
That's the same concept, that's the same concept.
They just have two, Gilchrist, they only have two up. Green Bush, there's five.
Does that make you nervous as a builder that there's almost five hundred of those, there's only fifty built?
That's why I asked.
I mean, that's your money, I mean, it's, you know.
Well, that's not our decision.
No, it's not, I just carry it.
Tis money, not ours.
But the fact that he knows that and is, as a businessman, willing to go forward speaks volumes too, I think. So, he has confidence in that.
If I could make. I want you to be successful, I want all of these to be successful.
Right.
I mean, you know, I just worry that we have a lot of empty buildings.
No, and I, and I, and I just visited a condo development, actually, what for? They, they built condos off of Lagresse, but they were building in East Greenwich, and they invited me to come take a look at that development and that concept. And, you know, I, I walked in and I couldn't believe what I was seeing for this style condo. And, and they were the same range, between two-eighty and three-fifty. It depended on where you were in East, on the, the water side or non-water side. But, you know, it, it was appealing to me, and if I, I'll be honest, if I didn't have two children at home and it was just me and my wife, I'd be probably going into one of those style condos because it was just, it fit me, you know, but.
I hope they're all built, they're all successful. I just think, to think of the future, I think we'd be very foolish to think that this is not going to be an impact on our town.
Again, Jake, I totally agree with you, but Dave's Market will be a huge impact on Providence Street. Or Stop &amp; Shop would be a big.
But I'm not against this, I'm just saying, there's a hundred and thirty-two cars gonna be coming out every day on Providence Street, and it's going to be the people traveling Providence Street at those times that are going to be affected. And hence, they're gonna be calling us as council people, saying, what the hell are you gonna do about it?
And, and again, I totally agree with you because we will get those phone calls. But again, there's one community, I, I keep bringing up these, because there's one community that they're not in around this area. They're in East Greenwich, they're in Warwick, they're in Coventry. They have looked at areas in West Warwick. And, you know, they're gonna bring a big clientele to the, to their market area. Who knows, it could be Jerry's, it could be wherever. But if they decide, and that's Providence Street, I mean, Jerry's is a busy store, but Dave's is gonna be twice as busy if it went in there. And think about the impact onto Providence Street. And there's absolutely nothing we could say or do because all they're doing is changing Jerry's to Dave's. And that's what I'm saying over there, is if they wanted to go on that side of Providence Street, purchase a few houses in front of them, make that a giant parking lot, they can do that. And that's, that's, and that's gonna impact Providence Street. So, to me, sixty-six condos or a Dave's Market, me personally, I'd love to see Dave's Market here in the community. But when it comes to that, that area of town, I'd rather see the sixty-six condos. And I, and I fully understand the traffic, I mean, it's, traffic's traffic and, and that's a busy intersection. I know where it backs up from.
Certain times.
The, the, the.
From the London Avenue.
All the way out. And, and it's usually three, four o'clock in the afternoon. I avoid it.
A Friday afternoon.
The best I can, I take Wakefield, and I never even go down that side of Providence Street because I know it's gonna be busy. And I know it's gonna, it's busy now, and I know it's gonna be busy later. But, you know, again, it, it's, it's what the neighborhood wants and what, it, it, you know, we're here to represent the neighborhood. And the town, we gotta just think about what the future's gonna bring there. Again, the, the, the town can shoot that down and he can go out and, and he don't have to go before zoning to put that retail store in there or that grocery, because that's, that's the only stores that are making it, dollar stores and retail grocery right now. And, you know, again, I'd love to always see a West Valley back there, but they tried, that was their first intent, and that did not happen. I can recommend a couple, but I'll get in trouble here tonight.
I can't, can advertise at the meeting, I can name a few.
We voting?
Talk to you after the meeting.
Mr. President, could, on a procedural matter, I have.
Mr. President, could, I, on a procedural matter, um, I have the green cards from notice to the abutters. May I turn them into Madam Clerk outside of these proceedings?
That's fine.
Okay.
Anybody have any issues with the ordinance changing from business to R, uh, B one to R seven five? Do you have any issues with that matter? You can come on up and speak now if you'd like. No issues? Okay, with that being said, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Town Council res- resolution approving the amendment of the zoning district designation for AP thirty-six lot thirty-five, fifty-nine, and two-twenty, changing the zone from B one to R seven five and permitting the use of the property for development of up to sixty-six residential multifamily condominiums, condominiums and thirty-three buildings.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second, discussion?
Again, I'm just, I'll ask the question once more. Typically, an ordinance is, is, has two readings. Yet, we're, we're doing a red-
Mr. DeFiore, the resolution ordinance quandary which you've always responded to.
Ordinance is required.
Right.
Resolution's required.
Yeah, but again, we, we haven't done two readings on the ordinance, and we're gonna pass the resolution?
If we're gonna, so we're gonna do another one? That doesn't, I don't know if that makes sense to me.
It would make more sense to put the resolution out with a second reading. So, if the council wants to table it, there's no, there's no impact on the project if the resolution gets approved the same night as the ordinance.
Mr. Solicitor, it's my understanding that the approval on the map would be conditional on the two readings of the ordinance.
Well, my suggestion would be is to table the resolution.
Right.
I would, I would, but I would table it to date certain-
Yes, that's fine.
Well, that's fine.
That's fine.
The next council meeting.
There's gonna be a second council meeting in December.
Yes.
Table it to that, and then that way everything runs on the same date, and there's no impact on the project as it stands today.
That's acceptable.
Can we motion to table?
Second.
All in favor, sir?
Aye.
Aye. Two.
December seventeenth.
December seventeenth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Introduction regarding petition of Arthur J. Karen to amend zoning ordinance and map located in the town of West Warwick, East Greenwich Avenue designated as Tax Assessor's plat thirty, lot seventeen.
Mr. President, if I may be heard, I've spoken to Mr. Cronin about that matter, and also with Attorney DeFiore. It's been agreed by the parties that that matter will be recommended to be sent to the planning board for review and then further recommendation.
So, that, that is, uh, correct. Uh, it's here for introduction, the start of the process, which we're finishing on the West Valley in, uh, now. So, it needs to go to planning, uh, for their review and recommendation, but I need the authority of the council, uh, to do that. If you, if the council would like a brief presentation on the concept, I'm prepared to provide that, um, but there's no, it's informational only.
I, I would like to hear.
I'd like to, before I say yes, go somewhere else. I wanna know what it's about.
Yes.
That's why we're here, right? So, Thomas Cronin, Nolan Bernero, Cronin Farrar, ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant, Arthur J. Karen. Uh, this is plat thirty, lot seventeen on East Greenwich Avenue. It's not a big lot, eight point nine acres. It has a house, uh, on the northeast, uh, excuse me, northwest corner of the, the property. Um, for reasons that no one really, uh, can, can produce, this lot is just about seventy-five percent residential and twenty-five percent commercial in zoning. Um, this situation, uh, leads to problems, uh, not, not so much presently, uh, but it would prohibit any financing of the property. One of the things you have to obtain, uh, when you want to obtain a building, uh, permit or financing, is a zoning certificate. And if you want to build a house on a piece of property, that zoning certificate's gonna say that it's owned for residential use. Uh, this is one single piece of property. It's not more than one lot, yet it has, uh, zoning which is bifurcated, although not in the middle. It's, uh, it's, um, split, as I said, seventy-five, twenty-five. So, that, we would like to, uh, rezone the commercial twenty-five percent to R ten, which is what the remainder of the lot is. Uh, the surrounding uses, um, are also residential. The, to the east are single-family houses. Across the street, uh, across East Greenwich Avenue is a residential apartment development, and the property to the west is a single-family residential property. The property to the south is property owned by Cox, uh, not currently used. It's a, really, they use it as a buffer to their parking area and building. This is, as the crow flies, pretty close, um, to the business park, uh, just so you get an idea of where you're at. You know, from, say, Papagino's, we've been using lots of landmarks here tonight, from Copeland Janks to Papagino's, it's a short distance down on the left. So, we would like to, um, make a proposal to the planning board, um, outlining why we want to change the eastern portion of this property from commercial to R ten to match the rest of the lot, uh, so that future development in a residential sense can take place on this property.
Al?
If the council wants to know how this could happen, I hate to admit it, but there was a time in this town when the council would change its zones, and somebody with a crayon would draw a line on the zoning map.
It's like that hurricane map that happened a few months ago, just a crayon through.
Well, there was, so, how some of this zoning lines there were drawn by crayons, and that's how this could have happened.
That was almost a hundred years ago though, Al, right?
Wasn't, it's, I, little, little, little bit after mine.
All right. I, I, this is, again, this is just the council proving it to go to the planning board to decide on it?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
Me neither.
Anybody, anybody here to speak on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
If, uh, if I could indulge the council that, given the straightforward nature of the, uh, proposal, uh, we, we would like to place this matter on, on the council's agenda for a public meeting, uh, at the end of January, assuming that we can get, um, planning board approval.
Let's see if you get through planning first, and then we'll come, then come to us.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin. An ordinance, section thirty-four, public hearing by zoning board of review of the town of West Warwick zoning cor, code of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move in second, Al?
Background to this, there are three things that a zoning board does. It hears variances, it hears special use permits, and it hears appeals from either the building official's decision or the planning board. A recent lawsuit in the town of Coventry, the Superior Court came down and said, the notices that have to be sent out for those three types of hearings are governed by the state statute. For some reason, our zoning code a, as it relates to the notices for variances, our zoning code as it relates to the notices for special use permits is in compliance with our state statute. The provision for notices for appeals from the, uh, building official or the planning board does not comply with the state statute. Why this one is different than the other two, I have no idea. And all this is doing is bringing that ordinance, that, that ordinance for notice from, for appeals in compliance with the state statute, as the other two already are.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Lachardi stepped out. Jay?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting, approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen executive session. And November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, town council meeting.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda, license applications resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Um, if you hear for any license applications, they've all been approved pending police, fire, approval, and tax collector and assessor's approval.
Town council meeting scheduled for twenty twenty, location, town of West Warwick, town council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, seven P M, previously tabled. Schedule of dates for twenty twenty, January seventh, February fourth, March third, April seventh, May fifth, June second, July seventh, August fourth, September first, October fourth, November tenth, December first.
That's, uh, October sixth, Maria.
October sixth.
Move to take it off the table.
Second. Move in second. Do all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back on the table? Just need a motion to move the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion? Jay? Is there something on this matter?
No, finish this matter.
Okay. Um, any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Can we, uh, can we bring back license, uh, applications again? I need to recuse myself, so I wanna, can we, uh, do a-
How do we have to move, move to a-
Remit your name as part of the five oh four.
Make, make a motion to, to, uh, remit my, uh, my name from the, uh, the license applications vote.
And you want to recuse yourself?
And I'll accuse myself from, from the Donahues Pizza vote.
For the record, Councilman Messier recused himself from Donahues Pizza. Do we need to re-vote on all that?
Uh, yes, just, uh, file, the matter will be a motion to reconsider all of the license applications with the exception of Donahue, so you can vote on that, and then just do Donahue's on the table.
Well, I'll tell you what, he just recused himself. He walked out of the room, so let's just take him off of everything, make it easier.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider license application.
Just a bit of motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Councilman Messier recused himself from the matter.
Thank you, Councilman. Merry Christmas.
Good night.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Al. You're not gonna be here on the seventeenth with us?
January.
Okay. Enjoy flowers.
You're gonna decorate the palm trees down there?
All righty, uh, claim.
Town council hereby appuses or denies the following claim against the town, Matthew Maderos for Kowalik Drive, ten seventeen, two thousand nineteen, due to rainstorm, the car was flooded and had to get it professionally cleaned to remove mold. Claim amount, one hundred and forty dollars.
I need somebody to move.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Move in second, discussion. Mr. Maderos, I know you're here on this matter, if you wanna-
Good evening. Matthew Maderos, excuse me, for Kowalik Drive, if I can, uh, present you with, uh, some pictures.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, just to give you a brief history, I purchased my house in, uh, April two thousand and four, been there fifteen years now. Since, two months after I purchased my house, I've had an issue with, uh, the street flooding. Live at the corner of Flowey Intersection, Aqualic and Aldrich. Been dealing with this with, uh, Councilman Leo Constantino, and then Phyllis Gufferson, and now with, uh, Ms. Lachardi. Um, this has been an ongoing problem that has cost me thousands and thousands of dollars for damage to my property, because the drainage is not sufficient enough to handle the amount of rain that comes into that area. My house sits low compared to the other houses in the neighborhood. Everybody else is up a little bit higher, so there's really no damage to their houses, only mine. Um, runoff comes from the town of Coventry and West Warwick. Everything comes down into that intersection. Councilman Gufferson had engineers come out back in the day and look at it, and, uh, pretty much heard exact words to me where there's an issue. The pipes aren't big enough to handle the amount of water, but because you're the only one that it affects, it's not worth the town count, uh, the town spending the money to fix it. Um, that's the response I got. I've had four cars ruined, um, my yard has been ruined numerous times, um, and now the most recent is my son's car got flooded October seventeenth with the most recent storm that we had, which started growing mold, and I had to get it cleaned again, and I'm just tired of it. Uh, if the town doesn't want to fix the problem, then I'm just gonna keep submitting claims for every property damage that I have until it's, it's done. I don't know what else to do. As you can see, the water, it gets three and a half, four feet deep in the middle of that intersection, and that's no exaggeration. Those pictures there show you how much water. It comes up into my house. It's ruined stuff in my garage that I've had to throw it away. It's gone all the way up, you know, you can see one section at the backside of my house where the fence is, and it's six inches, you know, the water line's six inches on the fence, and that's at the back of my house.
Nope, I'm not disagreeing with that, and I, personally, for a hundred and forty dollar claim, I'm not.
Well, it's, it's more than that, though.
No, I understand, but he's asking for a hundred and forty.
The claim is one forty, however. I met with Mr. Maderos several times at his house regarding the water issue.
Only the claim damages on the, before the board, nothing else.
Okay.
Claim, the claim regarding his automobile damages, the organist before the council right now, he's doing a nice job, but you guys really can't respond because, I mean, it's, it's, you're opening up a can of worms. That could be a violation of the OMA, because it's not on the agenda. Now, it's not to say you can't put it on the agenda.
Can we amend the agenda to put it on the agenda now?
If you amend the agenda, I would just say you can only discuss what Mr. Maderos has discussed regarding, um, what he says. I don't, I won't get into what perhaps Councilman Gufferson, Councilman Gufferson said or anything like that. But again, if he's got more evidence going back to two thousand and four, which I'm assuming you do, I would suggest putting it on another, uh, council meeting to discuss the whole thing in its entirety, instead of doing a piecemeal.
I mean, if I can say, you can strike whatever Councilman Gufferson said. It doesn't really-
No, the point I'm getting at-
I, I mean, I've been dealing with, uh, Ms. Lachardi, and he knows, and the issue is a drainage issue, uh, which he has helped.
Tonight's agenda only talks about the damage to the vehicle. It's a claim as it relates to the damage to the vehicle.
It's not about you. You can talk about whatever you want.
Mr. Maderos has given us, has given us something to think about, yes.
Yeah, no, no, I get that.
But my suggestion would be is, because you've been there since oh four, and there's been numerous complaints that town manager can check out with his department heads to verify those complaints, I would suggest putting it on, uh, an agenda so that the entirety of your situation could be discussed instead of just doing a piecemeal, because that way you might finally get some action.
Whatever we can do to fix this.
So, we'll put this on the next agenda for the seventeenth, and I'll write it up, and I will speak with you. We'll write it together.
Okay.
That way it'll go and get permission.
To get any information he could provide to you regarding any complaints made to any of the different departments. If you have copies of those, still keep them.
It was all just word of mouth, calling them. I used to call them three o'clock in the morning. If it was flooding and I was awake, I woke them up.
Which is fair.
Fair enough.
No, it's not, because I, I'm not councilman.
I haven't done that to, I haven't done that to him yet.
No, but, but we are working on the issue, so, but yes, Maria, so I'd like to put this on for the seventeenth, and I'll, I'll give it to you next week.
And then notify the appropriate, uh, personnel that you might need here.
Yep, yep.
All right, um, this is for approval for the claim of a hundred and forty dollars for Matthew Maderos for Kowalik Drive, um, for the damage done to his car due to flooding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing the expenditure of a sum not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for actuarial services provided through the Rhode Island General Treasurer's Office to explore the feasibility of the town of West Warwick's entrance into the state of Rhode Island, municipal employee retirement system pension plan merged previously tabled.
Move to take it off the table.
Second.
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution.
Second.
Discussion, town manager?
Yes, this, uh, resolution was tabled, uh, the last meeting, second meeting in November, due to a concern of lack of specificity. Excuse me, thank you, uh, of the title of the resolution. So, the, uh, resolution was, title was changed to add the sum not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for actuarial services uh, provided, uh, through the Rhode Island General Treasurer's Office for this feasibility study. So, uh, the, uh, title was changed, uh, the resolution to make it clear that this is going to be for actuarial services through the, uh, the, uh, state treasurer's office, uh, general treasurer's office, and for some not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. So, it just clears it up, and the title as well as the body of the resolution speaks for itself. And the last meeting, we had a discussion as to what the purpose was and intent, so, and this just, uh, clears it up, so the title is reflective of, you know, the cost and, and, and what's being done.
And excited to get the process started, to be honest with you.
Any other discussion from the council?
Let's take a roll call, vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason? Yes. Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Resolution passes.
Town of West Warwick proposed fiscal year 2021 budget timeline.
Good evening, councilors, uh, before you is the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget timeline that I usually do at this time of year, just laying out, um, the, the process of the next fiscal year budget. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Kristin, could you, uh, explain the, uh, meeting at the next council meeting?
Sure, uh, on the 17th, we'll have a, a quick joint meeting with the school. Um, that is, uh, according to Rhode Island General R16-221, where the town shares their revenue projections, and the school shares their expenditure expectations. Um, it's just a quick meeting that is, uh, a state statute that we should be following and having 90 days prior to the, at least 90 days, at most 90 days, prior to the, uh, presentation of the school budget.
Any questions for Kristin? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Um, just wanna go back, Mary Ann, to the, um, the claim, um, the, the resident, uh, Matthew Maderos requested that we actually do January 7th because he can't get that night off, so if we could just have it on the January 7th agenda item, that'd be fine. Thank you.
That's, that passed, yeah. Resolution authorizing Vision software upgrade for tax collection, tax administration, tax admin, and sewer billing, the total cost of the upgrades after discount is $121,950, cost will be covered by tax sale fees, general ledger account number L1000012024, sponsored by Council President Gosman.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second, Kristin.
So this is a resolution, our, our, uh, tax collection and admin software is in dire need of an upgrade. The Vision software hasn't been updated in 20 years. Um, as a, as a company, they're going through a giant upgrade, and we would like to, uh, participate in upgrading the system and use our tax sale fees that we've collected this year, next year, to pay for it. It will, it'll streamline the process, it will speed up the system, which can be ridiculously slow when trying to run reports. I know Rose in South can speak more to the absolute need of this.
I think it's my understanding, and I might be wrong, that, um, upgrades will no longer be issued and, and, uh, maintenance will no longer be available for the old version, so that sort of makes it an easy conversation, but...
On that part also, yes. And we have checked with, not upgrades, but if we had to go with another system, and we're looking at other systems that may have been available, mo, most of them are at least two to three times more expensive than what we have.
Because we'd have to convert everything over, this is just an upgrade, so it's less expensive.
Uh, some of the, the towns that have moved with someone else went right back. Westerly went with a company from Connecticut. They, they couldn't get it to work in Westerly, they're back with Vision. I know there were a couple other towns that were thinking of it.
Yeah, we have 35 communities that, um, are part of, uh, Vision, of 39. So they have about 85% of us, and they actually are, they, they, they work very well with the state. So any tax offset program we have, the RIMS program, they're always lobbying for all the municipalities. They're always atta, attending our Rhode Island Tax Collector meetings. Their, their customer service is outstanding, they, they get right back to us, they, you know, you're talking to someone, they know your name. We've been, we've been, um, with Vision for 20 years now. So this upgrade, upgrade is very, very, we need this.
They, the person that invented or developed this was going to start something new with our current camera, uh, camo software, but Vision snatched them back.
And the other thing is, we'll be on the cloud, so we won't have to, um, have a server, so everything's gonna be on the cloud.
No maintenance, I'm buying servers every three to five years.
So how come this is coming up now? I mean, i, i, as opposed to a budget time, I mean, it's not necessarily a surprise.
No, I did bring it up, I actually put it on the capital budget, and it did get declined.
Okay.
So I did bring this up.
Okay.
Back at, like, last year.
Was, was it necessarily declined? We knew that we could use tax sale rather than general fund tax money, we would rather use our tax sales fees and not hit the charges.
It was all coming to a head for all the communities at this point. So they're trying to get a lot of early people in to save money.
Yeah, it's a, it's a one-time fee versus if we had to say we had to raise taxes $121,000, then it's every year they're paying $121,000, so we're better off doing it the way they're doing it and taking it out of that ledger.
Understand that we saved some money by making this decision tonight and, and signing a contract soon, is that right?
10%, 10% just now.
So when do you, if, if this is approved tonight, when do you get it?
Well, they start, um, going live in the spring, but they have other towns and cities that are before us. So they're not gonna do it, say it's our tax collection court, we won't do it in July or whatever.
Probably be after the first court.
So, so we can, we can control that?
Yes.
And, and going, um...
We won't be the first, so, so they'll know...
We don't want to be the beta, yes.
Right, they'll know what mistakes are made, and as they start progressing and doing in more towns, it becomes a faster process.
Any concern about not doing it, or doing it in the middle of a tax year? Worried about that at all?
No, because they're gonna go dual.
Okay, oh, all right.
They'll go dual, they'll go dual for a week, I think they, or this is, there is a time period where you go... We'll have it two weeks beforehand before it's live.
Okay.
Then they'll run dual, make sure everything's fine, and then shut it off.
So, everybody in the tax collector's office will be using this?
And tax assessor, and also sewer.
So will there be a training on this, or is this just a system that comes in and says?
No, there's training.
We're helping to develop it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are getting training, but we're the ones that are telling them what we want.
Okay.
So they've actually have people from all the different communities saying, what do you, what do you want? What's, what do the collectors need, what do the assessors need? They charted it all together, and they've put together different things, and they've already showed us some of the...
A lot of pieces.
So also, if an employee decides they want to go, go, move down the sewer department, you'll have the same type of collections, and there's no... So it's not bad either.
Makes sense.
Makes it easier for us to use each other's software instead of having to log into two separate things, there's a lot of technical areas that are...
And it's not, it's separate to the camera system, so it's not...
Thank you. Any other comment, uh, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Contributions for the following agencies, West Warwick Veterans Council and West Warwick Assistance Agency Incorporated.
Uh, move the resolution.
Second. Move in second, discussion, Bob, how are you tonight?
Really good. I'm Bob Shiresmith, 229 East Greenwich Avenue, and past president of West Warwick Veterans Council. On behalf of the West Warwick Veterans Council, we would like to thank the town council for their past support of veterans in the town. Once again, we're asking for funding, the funding is used to put on the Veterans Day, the Memorial Day observance, and to maintain the Veterans Park. We have eight monuments over there and two cannons. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, thanks. Any questions for Bob before he goes back down? Is anybody here from the West Warwick Assistance Agency?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Plant, Mrs. Sylvester.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Mr. Plant.
Yes. Mr. Sylvester wanted to be here but couldn't.
Hi, Mrs. Sylvester, how are you?
Hi.
Just state your name and address for the record. I know your husband usually does this.
This is the first time I've done this.
That's okay.
Dan usually comes, but, uh, he's in the hospital right now. My name is Delia Sylvester, I live at 33 Grandview Drive, West Warwick, Rhode Island. And I'm here to ask for some money for the West Warwick Assistance Agency. I don't know if you got this letter, Dan said he, he sent...
Yes, we haven't.
Oh, everybody does have the letter.
Yes.
Okay.
He might be in the hospital, but he's still doing his job.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, he's, uh, given orders, for sure. I have a list of things to do today.
So, Ms., Mrs. Sylvester and I have had a conversation, she explained that Mr. Sylvester was in the, uh, in the hospital, and unfortunately, I called her late today to say she probably didn't need to be here, it was, it was so, um, bad out, so that's my fault, she was already on her, on her way. Some of the things we talked about last week were numbers, which you do have in the, in the handout, number of people that, uh, meals that are served, 132,000 meals served in, in 2018. I did ask for some financial statements, which they actually provided, um, they do have, um, an audit done, and that, that was handed to me today.
Our treasurer is here.
Yes, and I will actually make copies for people to, to take a look at, just to see. I also said, you know, I think I said to Mrs. Sylvester, if we found out you had half a million dollars in the bank, we probably wouldn't be so inclined to give you any money, that's a, uh, and I think...
We wouldn't either.
Mr. Plant, you said somewhere around either $9,000 in the bank?
Right, yeah.
Yes. I, is this the, your busiest time of the year?
Absolutely.
Actually, it is.
Yes.
Yes.
So...
Uh, we, we serviced, uh, last year in 2018, uh, 4,460 people. And, uh, right now, we have one more month to go in the year, and we're well over 15,000 people that we've serviced. And I just wanna, uh, point out to you that, um, we rely on assistance, uh, mainly through donations of money and food. And we're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 to 2:00, and our staff is made up entirely of volunteers. No, no person in the organization gets paid. So all of this money goes directly to the meeting.
Well, I'm, um, I've been, you know, since I've been on the council, I've had numerous conversations with Dan, probably two times a year anyway, on this matter. And, you know, it's, at times, you know, me personally, and I, and we've had council people up here who said we should not be giving, and, and I've always said, listen, if I go door to door and tell a resident that less than one penny of their taxes is going to feed needy families, I can guarantee you they'll say, please up that. And so $6,000 of a request, and we've been giving that almost every year, and I, and I personally think, um, you know, uh, going back to when I was a child, just seeing Christmases at my house lit up my, my family's face. So I see this going a long way, I mean, $6,000 is peanuts, and, but it goes a long way, and, and you guys, thank you for your volunteerism, I, I'm in favor for $6,000.
The, I believe, um, and Kristin, I'll put you on the spot, I believe we actually had this conversation of budget time, and these were the two organizations that we said that we would support.
Which we do have somewhat.
And so I, I believe we have $7,500 in...
I think it's closer to 10, isn't it?
Well, available, I'm just talking about for tonight.
Yeah, for tonight, yeah.
And I am one of the people that say, we, we can't be in the business of giving to every 501(c)(3), there's, there's no doubt about that. Um, this is something that they actually rely on us.
This one did come up, but do you remember what, what the amount we had, we had set aside for this particular?
We had, we had already specifically set that aside for this at that point.
Yes.
Now the bad news.
Yeah.
The, uh, agenda does not even indicate that it's a financial or a monetary contribution, and it has no dollar amounts on it. Therefore, I would suggest that this matter get tabled and put it...
Well, that's because the council from year to year has set the dollar amount, and that dollar amount has been set differently. At one time, the Veterans Council got 2,000, um, so, again, and that's a discussion before this council, because Councilman Lachardi, he might say 1,500, and Councilman Lachardi says, no, 2,000, Councilman Messier says 2,500, that's why there was no monetary value.
There would be a not to exceed, though.
But again, in, in their monetary requests on the attachments...
Dave, I'm not, I'm not disputing that at all, I'm not disputing what they do, and I'm disputing what the town has done in the past. All I'm saying is, based upon the Attorney General and the, uh, the workshop that was shared regarding the OMA, item 13 on the agenda does not have enough information. Now, notwithstanding that, the council could do what they want, but again, I'm just saying there's no information at all regarding a dollar amount or not to exceed amount or anything else.
My biggest concern right now is Christmas is coming, and they need to get...
I understand.
I, I mean, again...
So can we amend the agenda item?
Move the agenda item based upon both of the, uh...
To say that, to amend the agenda, item 13, to say contribution A to West Warwick Veterans Council in the amount of $1,500.
Not to exceed $1,500.
And B, West Warwick Assistance Agency Inc., not to exceed $6,000.
That would be fine.
So I would make a motion to amend tho, that agenda item to indicate those amounts.
I second, I second. Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
He feels better as well.
Thank you very much, sorry we made you wait so long.
So we are not violating the OMA?
And Mrs. Sylvester, give Dan our best...
No, because they brought up both of those.
For a quick healing, and he's home soon.
Yes.
Both presenters brought up the numbers.
And thank you for all you...
I would think that would be enough for the AG.
All right.
Resolution appointing Sheila L. Wall to the position of Personnel Director.
Resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion, Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, I'm very pleased to recommend, uh, that Sheila L. Wall be appointed Personnel Director for the town of West Warwick. She has extensive experience, human resource experience in the private, nonprofit, and public sectors. Sheila's worked in all phases of human resources, from policy development, benefit administration, complaint investigation, collective bargaining, labor relations, uh, grievance resolutions, appearance before state boards and commissions on behalf of, uh, communities. Uh, she has served as the Human Resources Director for the City of Lebanon, New Hampshire. She has a bachelor of arts, a dual bachelor of arts degree from the University of Rhode Island in Sociology and Urban Affairs, and a Juris Doctorate Degree from the University, the University of Connecticut School of Law. I'm confident that the combination of her personal experience and education will serve the town well as Personnel Director, and I ask for your confirmation of her appointment.
Any questions from the council?
Fantastic. When, when do you, you might have just said this, I'm sorry. Your, her, her start date?
January 14th.
Yeah, January 14th, just because of the relocation during the, the notice period relocation and during the holiday season, so, that's when she'll be starting.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Resolution appointing Donald Ulet to the position of Director of Public Works.
Resolution.
Second. Move in second, discussion?
Again, I'm very pleased to make the recommendation for Donna Lolet to be, uh, position of Director of Public Works for the town of West Warwick. Dawn has over 35 years' experience in public sector operations, management, and civil engineering. He has held five director's positions, uh, in his career, and also two city engineer's positions. Dawn has a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering and a Master of Science degree in engineering management. He's also a, uh, PE Professional Engineer Certification from Massachusetts. Uh, Dawn also has served in the military for over 11 years, and, uh, one of his, the projects that he worked on was the, uh, restoration of the water system in Kuwait after the Persian Gulf War, number one, right? And, and again, if you remember back then, uh, when Iraq invaded Kuwait, when they left, they took everything with them, they took equipment for hospitals, they took everything they could possibly do, so there was a big rebuilding, and, and Dawn was, uh, part of that process, uh, in the military. Again, he is exten, and again, he has, he has extensive project management experience, which would be a great asset to, to town, and we have a CDBQ program that's gonna be ongoing, and, uh, one of the projects will have a consulting engineer, Foson O'Neill. Uh, Dawn has experience dealing with consultant engineers. The other two projects are smaller in scale, they may not need a consulting engineer, so his background in civil engineering is gonna be, you know, uh, very instrumental for us. And again, it's sort of a void that we've had in-house. We have a good consulting engineer, but, you know, the back... We have a good consulting engineer, but, you know, the background that he has in public works and civil engineering project management, it's going to be a great asset to town. So, again, I ask for your appointment for Donald Ulet as the town's Director of Public Works.
Any questions or comments? Donald is here tonight. He's actually in the third or fourth row. Don, if you want to come up for a minute? Just so we can recognize who you are, because once we walk out of here, we're going to probably probably want to stick around for public comment tonight, too, just for the record.
Okay.
So, again, this is Donald. I think we were introduced before the meeting. He's become highly recommended. You know, I invited him up just so that anybody here in the public can see who he is and, you know, get the name with the face. Any questions?
When's your first day?
Thursday.
If we approve it.
Dodge the snowstorm. We dodge the hurricane.
Trust me, I didn't want to dodge the snowstorm.
All right. Hearing, no other comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Discussion action. A, Caleb Carlson is asking the Town Council to be a sponsor for Rockstar Cheer Rhode Island Funny-for-Funds Comedy Fundraising Event will be held on Saturday, March 7, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. at the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society, 11 Ventura Street, Westwark.
I was asked to have this put on the agenda. Caleb Carlson is actually Hope Carlson's daughter, who works for the Police Department. They do this every year, Rockstar Cheer Squad, and they would like us to advertise for that cheer squad down at the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society on March 7, which would be, if we donate $100, the Westwark Town Council will be on the banner behind the stage, also on the website. So, she's just looking for our support once again this year. Does anybody have an issue with that? And we have money in that account? All in favor?
Can I ask what the amount is?
$100.
$100.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Beat Maple Avenue, Main Street Traffic Light Update Sponsored by Council President Gosman.
Alls I can say is hallelujah. First of all, I want to thank everybody who's worked on this over the years. I know it's been through the Traffic Commission. I know it's been everywhere. We've been pushing the state to fix this traffic light. Maple Avenue and East Main, even though there's a 10-foot difference between the two intersections, they both turn green at the same time. So, if you were taking a left out of Maple onto Main, and you were taking a right off East Main, or taking a left, you were going to possibly collide. Last week, the state Rhode Island DOT was out here. They put a new traffic light in. It's four lights. It has a left-hand turn. It's working well. I've sat in the parking lot of the old Domino's Main Street Pub and watched it. It is much nicer and much safer for the neighborhood. I think the neighborhoods really like it. The neighborhood residents like it because they can come out of that neighborhood very safely now. So, I just wanted to give that update. I know it's been years in the making, and I want to thank anybody and everybody who's been working on it. That's my update.
Resignation of Westwark Technology Committee resolved that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignations from John Battella Jr. and Justin Stanley of the Westwark Technology Committee for the town of Westwark.
Take no action? Move on. We're taking no action.
Really?
Nobody moved it.
Okay. Appointment, reappointment for the Westwark Juvenile Hearing Board resolved that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individuals to serve as juvenile hearing board members for the town of Westwark with a term to expire 12/20/23.
I'm going to recuse myself from this, the appointment.
You're going to recuse from A and B, or just A?
Just B.
All right, so stick around for A. I have a motion.
I'll move the name of Susan Banks.
Nope, then...
Don't recuse yourself.
Recuse yourself. How many positions are there?
So, can I speak to it, or?
Yep.
So, I had the opportunity to work with Susan on the juvenile hearing board. She's been dedicated for several years. She actually, I don't have a resume in front of me, but she works with tides, and she brings a lot of experience to the board. Sympathetic ear. Kids come before us, so I would highly recommend her to continue.
So, are both of these reappointments?
Both are reappointing.
Yes.
So, we have a motion to move Susan Banks, seconded by Councilman Messier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Karen Simpson's already on this board also, correct?
Yes.
It's a reappointment. I'll make the motion to move Karen Simpson.
Second.
John, did you ever work with this individual? I can't really speak on it, but... Again, she's been on the board. I know I haven't worked with her. Chief has, have, you want to come up for a second? Put you on the spot. I know one of your officers run this, so have you heard any, she's been doing good? Any issues, any concerns?
All the board members have been doing well. I believe she actually is a clerk or past clerk at the middle school.
I think so, too.
So, very involved with children and sympathetic to their needs.
Yeah, she's the attendant secretary. Yeah, she deals with the attendance issues over there, so I'm sure that helps us up there.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with a term to expire 10/20/21, two with a term to expire 10/20/20. Board of Tenor Third, one term to expire 2/20/21. Public, one term to expire 11/2019. Public Recreation Committee, two full members. Pension Board Committee, one term to expire 11/18/2020, one term to expire 11/18/2021. Wanted to expire 11/18/2022. Juvenile Hearing Board, well, that just got passed, two terms to expire 12/2019. Public comments, designated portion of Town Council's open meetings for citizens to address comments to the Town Council relating to matters affecting the public business. Comments will be only addressed to the Town Council. Will take them under advisement. Where addressed to the Town Council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested. Members of the Town Council, being duly elected, the duly elected public body as identified in Rhode Island General Law 42-46-23, have no obligation to respond to the public comments.
Any public comment?
Alan Palazzo, 5 Robin Lane. And I have two suggestions and one request. In the beginning of August, Mr. Messier and Mr. Carrulo, more or less, got into a discussion regarding the playground up on Factory Street, and it piqued my interest, rather, regarding ADA compliance. I contacted the Governor's Commission on Disabilities about a week after that. They've looked into it. I had a meeting with Mr. Cooper last Wednesday, and I hadn't realized that he was in a wheelchair. And it was quite enlightening. He informed me that there's going to be a meeting with the, some members of the town tomorrow regarding that, because he's of the opinion it wasn't. So, that might be something a new director of DPW could take a look at, and you might want to put that on the agenda for a later meeting. The second issue was, on Sunday, I happened to be driving up New London Avenue, and I saw a DPW front-end loader scraping ice where the leak is, or the runoff is, on New London Avenue, which was surprising to me. So, I turned around, parked on St. George, so I could safely take a picture. The front-end loader had gone, but I took some pictures of the ice off the street. And as we've pointed out since last December, that is a major accident waiting to happen. While I was taking the pictures, I spoke with a resident of St. George, and he said that his yard is continuously flooded. He pointed out that the sidewalk in that area is almost level with the street. So, he gets runoff from that area, from the Warwick side, but it comes into his area. So, that might be another issue that the DPW director could look at, and you might want to put it on the agenda. The third item, I apologize for coming in late.
On number two, can I say something on number two?
Yes, sir.
We've already, we spoke about that at several council meetings. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a Kent County water issue.
Correct.
It's not a sewer authority issue.
Correct.
Before you go on, you're saying who's not an issue, but I will tell you this, and I spent many hours up there with those individuals. And I can tell you, there's one home specifically that said, before Kent County Water put their line in and repaved that road, his sub-pump used to work daily, and floods used to, his sub-pump would keep his basement from flooding. Since Kent County Water put that line in, new line and repaved, now remember, this has never happened prior to this. So, don't say that somebody might not be, could be at fault because...
But that's what we're being told.
No, we're being told. But I can tell you now, it has not, it happened shortly after they put that line in. Now, whether or not an underground spring was redirected, and again, that underground spring could be on top of that hill. We don't know.
What year was that?
Well, they put the water line in in 2015, '16, repaved in '17, '18. So, if you remember last winter, it was two winters ago, three winters ago, they just paved that.
And when did this, did it start as long ago as last December?
December, December, I want to say December 18th, at a council meeting. It was brought up. I want to say I brought it up, but it was brought up.
There's everything coming out of that road right now, and it's coming through the soil. We've, the sewer department has done their due diligence. They've put dye in where they've turned the sewer plant to a different color. So, all the dye that they put in over there, and that dye did not come out of that road. Kent County Water went out there with their headphones and was walking around with a seismograph meter or whatever.
Like Ghostbusters Tim.
And he says, oh, it's not coming from my water line. You're 100% right. It's probably not coming from one of them. I personally, I'm not an expert. I don't claim to be an expert, but I think a spring was redirected when they dug up that road, and
It's a problem.
And I'm going to tell you right now, once they backfilled it, and their engineers watched it get backfilled, that spring is not just popping up everywhere.
I was going to say, though, I did request that a sign of some type be put at the bottom. People know that there is an ice issue. Until we resolve it, the sign has not been placed yet at all.
It's something that needs to be resolved. I know you're working on it, but somebody needs to fix it.
But we know, all right, we know there's an issue. We've known there's an issue. We've all spoke about, all right, we had water testing done, we had sewer testing done. Somebody's contacted Valley Country Club. And if it's nobody's fault, that's fine, but there's still an issue that needs to be resolved. And we keep going around and round with this. It's going to, an accident is going to happen. Nobody's going to claim responsibility, and then we know about it. So, they're going to come after the town, correct?
Well, I think the city of Warwick on notice also, and all the players should be put on notice. But again, there's going to be an expense by someone to investigate to determine where that water's coming from.
So, who pays that expense?
For you right now, if you guys are going to make the decision to pay the money, then you're going to have to seek it from a third party, once everything's done, if in fact liability could be established on that third party.
But I think you're getting off of far field. That should be on the agenda.
Right, it's not on the agenda.
Before you get into a discussion.
I'm discussing this matter.
But you're talking liability aspects. Again, no one knows where the water's coming from right now. Or at least everyone that's been involved has said it's not ours. It's not ours. It's not ours. Council President has just thrown out a theory about an underground spring. Someone's going to have to look into that theory and to verify it, and then to determine how it was either misdirected or something affected it. Could be Kent County Water, could be our own sewer treatment facility. It could be something else.
Well, and again, I want to correct, everybody keeps thinking the council's not taking any action. We've requested the town manager, we've requested the city of Warwick.
Yeah.
Senator Satchel has called me on the matter. He's requested Rhode Island Department of Transportation look into the matter. Representative Jim Jackson, who lives right across the street, they've been trying to get the state to take over on the matter, but it's not a state load, so they're putting on the town. And then, we're going back and forth. Once we rip that up, and again, it could be up on top. We don't know where it is and what expense, at what expense. And I understand the aspect of accidents and all that. I don't want to see that. Personally, in my opinion, you know, it's going to be bad for the neighborhood over there, but if it gets to the point where we need to shut down New London and use side streets, we might have to do that on a safety factor until we decide how we're going to rip that road open.
It's not going to fix itself, though. At some point, you're going to fight the bullet and do it.
It's talking about ripping it up and how much you want to rip up, and what you're going to dig.
Or, and rip it up, and how far, who knows, I mean, who knows how far, like, how far do you need to rip up?
Is there a way to contain it and divert it without ripping up to take care of it now?
You'd have to put a shed down on top of a factory, close the lane down, and if it's, since it's going downhill, you'd have to put up some type of barrier where it's going to swing, I don't know what the name of that street is, in Warwick. But that's the only place where it could always run off, but then you're going to have all those problems over there.
No, it's, it's...
But something has to be done.
Again, Alan, welcome to the community, and... Come on up if you want.
The only part that is coming up, and it's from Warwick, correct?
No, we own that. Warwick owns the curves.
The street part is ours?
We had an extraordinarily wet year last year. And in Westerly, where I worked prior to here, they had several places, in fact, they had a dozen places, that there was never a water problem, and all of a sudden, we had a water problem. We had an icing problem. With the volume of the high groundwater tables, the volume of water we got over the last, and I'm talking 2018, 2017 into 2018, your water tables went up, and it's very likely that you had a change in just your underground flow. And you could have changed a spring that had been running northwest, you know, for 100 years, and now all of a sudden, now it's running north-south.
Kent County put a nice, big, large pipe in there, brand new, from top to bottom.
So, it very well could just be an act of God on this one, at this point in time.
Five feet deep. And the part that concerned me was when the resident told the Sewer Department, Harrison, and group that were there that day, I had a sub-pump running every single day, and ever since they replaced that pipe, my sub-pump hasn't run. That speaks volumes right there. We just got to figure out where it was diverted from and how high up. Because the more roads you dig up and, you know, disturb water lines and whatever else, you know. To be honest with you, I was hoping it was a water line that would burst, and then we could say Kent County Water, get out there and fix it. But that's not the case. It's not going to burst. It's just going to keep seeping until it stops.
And Mr. President, when this issue arose, I spoke with our consulting engineer, Jim Jeremiah, who's also the consulting engineer for Kent County Water. And he said that when he consulted with his staff, there were notations for two years where there was water seeping in like this. And then, in the month of November, it stopped, which would lead you to believe that's sort of a water table issue. And that's not a great answer, but in our investigation, just speaking what Don said, it could be a high water table. Now, again, this is going to require, it's an engineering problem. It's going to require an engineering solution, which, you know, may be complicated. And in a sense that, you know, if you have to determine where the water's coming from, and if it's coming from some private property, as was said, is there a liability on that property owner for having water going on to the public property, creating a public issue, public nuisance? Well, that's one question. But it's going to require an investigation, engineering, to figure out where this is coming from. And it's like, you know, without that proper review, research from that standpoint, I mean, it's like if you try to buy a house and renovate it, you're going to have one problem after another after another. So, what may seem a little simple may be more complicated. I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but... But if you look at, if you have to have some type of culvert or something to keep the water, then it's going to have to be piped from a location to the closest available storm surge. But again, then you have to look at where all the other utilities are, so it all has to be laid out properly. So, it is an engineering problem. It has to be solved in hearing. And it's going to have to be something, when they can do it, probably a spring-type project, because you can't do that now. But in the meantime...
Couldn't it just be filled, like, you can see it coming through the cracks. Can't we just fill that and create a berm of some type as well?
If you don't know...
Soon as it freezes, just like a pothole, just soon as it freezes, the asphalt will rust around.
And then, what's been done is public works.
It's weak, it's pulling.
Exactly. That's what's pulling up. So, it's a water table goes down temporarily. The problem will be solved. the problem will be solved, but it's, it's temporary, because we have to have a real fix, but public works is, is, is doing their sanding, salting as they can, as was said, trying to keep that down, and as I said, the signage, signage needs to be put up there just as a warning, and we'll make sure that gets done. But again, it, it's going to be, could be very, you know, complicated, maybe not hard, but complicated to figure out what needs to be done, where it needs to be done, and it's something that's going to have to be done when, when you can do work and whether permits, now's not the time, it's going to have to be done probably in the spring, but it is something that is important, on the radar, and, you know, we'll have to do the best we can, but, again, when you think about it, the road, the roads in, in West Warwick, the other side where the water's coming from is from Warwick, property owners are, are there, and again, I don't know the liability of it, but if this were a private property to property owners, if a property owner does something to their, their property that creates a runoff problem to another's, then there's action to be taken from that complication, so, and these are all issues that are going to have to be looked at as we go towards looking for a permanent solution.
And, and the board, members of the board of the country club have reached out and said, you know, if, they, they're even wondering where it's coming from, because if it's coming from them, they want to resolve it also, but again, we just got to figure it out, and it's not the easiest thing. So you pay it back.
And take a remedial action, try to do best we can.
And the third item I have is actually a point of order. I wasn't here for item G one, and I understand that was approved, were there any changes made to this agenda on that one, the abandonment of the street? Okay, which street did you abandon? Because there's no Giorgio Street in West Warwick.
So, so that is.
That's a major point of order.
It's the spelling, and there are some maps, I had this conversation, there are some maps that spell it G E O, I do not, I'm not familiar with it, as G E O, it's G I O, as far as I know.
Exactly.
Well, it's after the Giorgio.
After the Giorgio family, that's why, when I saw that, I.
Interestingly enough, if you go and look at that road sign, which I have, it looks like it was made up as G E O, and they cut it off to make it because there's a space in between the two, so that's, that's only thing happened here, yes.
But my point of order is a legal issue on that, you abandoned the street, if, if the resolution or the abandonment says G E O, there is no Giorgio in West Warwick, and there's a major issue there, so I just wanted to point that out as a point of order, I came in late, and that's why I asked for clarification, it's up to you guys to fix it. Thank you.
On, on my map, on here, it says Winter Street.
Winter Street.
I'll show you after.
The, the.
That's Google, Google doesn't count.
The, the plan.
The town map says Giorgio.
The, the, the plan that they gave us that stamped says G I O.
As in the Giorgio family?
Correct.
One in on the westbound, yeah. Giorgio's, I don't love four hundred, and the Giorgio's that live right next door, Peter from Spelling's.
Yes.
So which Giorgio was it under?
Again, if you look there right now, it is G I O on the street sign.
Right, but you have the Giorgio, Nino Giorgio, next door on, but then you have the Giorgio family that ran up four hundred.
Having grown up in Natick, and I'm going to be sixty-seven in about a month, that was the Giorgio family, Frank Giorgio Senior, who ran the Democratic Party for all the Italian immigrants in this town since its creation, and that is the Giorgio family, Frank Giorgio Junior, Diane Giorgio, Nino Giorgio, that's the way they spelled their name, that was their property, that is in that area, that's Natick.
Yes.
The IO?
IO, yeah. Well, it, it's interesting, resolution spells it both ways.
Pronunciation was correct.
Yeah.
Spelling error.
Is that correct?
Well, it does, as I said, the stamped thing does say G I O.
There's no other Giorgio road or Giorgio Street or Giorgio Drive?
I am on a, I don't, I can't answer that.
All right, any other comment, any other public comment? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye, I mean, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.